Welcome, everyone. I called to open or call to order the open session on the September 28th, adjourned regular meeting of the city council at 6:16 PM. Well, former Mayor George Parks, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Armando.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Massey.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Here.
Mayor DeToye.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, could you please provide a closed session report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the city council convened this regular meeting at 5 o'clock in these chambers. There was one public comment on the closed session agenda. There was no reportable action taken during the closed session. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring us to announcements. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements? Councilwoman Armando.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I don't know if it's now or later, but I'm going to announce it now because I can. So SB 1444, the South Bay Regional Housing Trust Bill authored by Senator Ben Allen and co-authored by Assembly Member Al Marasucci, passed through the Assembly, passed through the Senate, and was signed by the governor this afternoon. So we will officially have a South Bay Regional Housing Trust that will be administered by the South Bay Cog. More to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that. Any other announcements of events? Seeing none, I do have a few. Ballots for the November 8th general election will be arriving in mailboxes soon. Please visit the election page on the city's website to obtain election information, learn about local ballot measures, and get information regarding the candidates for the Hermosa Beach City Council. Next up, community movie night. Did you know that the seat that, did you know that scenes from the movie Carrie were filmed in Hermosa Beach Community Center? On Thursday, October 13th, you will watch the cult horror classic at the Hermosa Beach Community Center. Come dressed up in your best prom attire, and you can get the behind-the-scenes look at the filming spots used in the movie. There'll also be a photo opportunity and haunted surprises. Tickets are $10 and can be purchased at the community center or on the city website. And the last announcement is I hope you're able to join me on October 15th at 9:00 AM at Moondust Parquet, which is at 1014 Second Street to help spruce up the walls in the basketball court with a fresh coat of paint. We'll also be discussing the Park's master plan, and city staff will be on site to help answer any questions. You can sign up on the city calendar, the city's calendar of events page, or to show up the day of event, and all are welcome. That'll take us to approval agenda.
I'll move, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Armando. Accept the agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Massey with the second. Any comments? Seeing none from Councilwoman Campbell. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Armando.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor DeToye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And what's next on the agenda?
Item 7A proclamation presentation, presentation from Beach Cities Health District on Alcove Beach Cities. And I believe this item has been postponed to the October 11th meeting. Next, we have item 7B, recognizing October 5, 2022 as California Clean Air Day.
Perfect. And so I do have, let me pull it up. So proclamation for Clean Air Day, October 5, 2022. Whereas on October 5, 2022, over a million people across California will join together, take action to clean the air we all breathe. And whereas Clean, California Clean Air Day is built on the idea that shared experiences unite people to action to improve our community health. By joining together for a unified day of action, we can create new habits to clear the air for all members of California's diverse communities. And whereas children living in highly populated areas operate at 80% or less lung capacity, resulting in an increase of asthma. Air pollution is responsible for 1 million school absences annually in California, and 16,000 Americans die from lung cancer despite having never smoked in their lifetime. Depending on the location, Californians may lose nearly a year of life expectancy due to air pollution. And whereas standard buses and trains only emit 20% as much greenhouse gases per passenger mile as riding in a car alone, and 75% as many nitrogen oxides. With an increased number of these vehicles going to zero emission options, these statistics are improving every day. And whereas when it comes to air pollution, we can all do our part. Whether you're an individual, business, government, agency, or nonprofit organization, there are things we can all do to improve the air quality and protect public health. In a state with some of the worst air pollution in the United States, it is imperative that we do. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Michael DeToye, Mayor of the City of Hermosa Beach, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize October 5, 2022 as Clean Air Day in Hermosa Beach. On this day, we encourage all citizens to take the Clean Air Pledge at www.cleanairday.org and commit to doing our part to clear the air through actions big and small. Get involved in Clean Air Day events, and remember that walking or biking to your destination is a true zero emissions option. Date is September 28, 2022. With that, I will kick it over to the city manager for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council, as you are aware, we had a, an incident yesterday resulting in a gas leak, so I wanted to just provide an update for you and members of the community. Yesterday morning, a contractor damaged a natural gas line at the intersection of 25th Street and Ozone Court during ongoing AT&amp;T work to upgrade its underground fiber optic system. The Los Angeles County Fire Department, Southern California Gas, and our Public Works team quickly responded to the incident to ensure public safety and closed the roadway for emergency repairs. Repairs lasted into the early morning hours because the damage occurred at the intersection of two gas lines. The repairs are now complete. We thank our Public Works team for coordinating with SoCal Gas and AT&amp;T's contractor working with nearby, for working with nearby residents. We want to assure the public that the contractor did take the necessary precautions in coordination with SoCal Gas to mark utilities prior to excavation. Unfortunately, though, these incidents occasionally occur during excavation work. The roadway has reopened to traffic, and temporary pavement is scheduled to be installed on Friday. We will continue to provide additional updates on the city's website and social media. Next, I'd like to provide an update on our upcoming rabies clinic. Our annual rabies clinic is back after a two-year hiatus. The upcoming clinic will be held at the basketball courts adjacent to Clark Field on Thursday, October 6, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Personnel from VCA Coast Animal Hospital will provide the vaccinations free of charge, and no appointment is necessary. Hermosa Beach dog licenses will also be available for purchase. On October 12th, we have an energy and water conservation virtual event. Please join the city and the South Bay City's Council of Governments for a virtual workshop on energy and water conservation. The virtual meeting is scheduled for 5:00 PM on Wednesday, October 12th. It will include tips on ways to conserve water and energy and how to lower your utility bills. Attendees will also have the chance to win prizes. You can register for the workshop on the city's website. Also want to mention regarding our recruitment efforts, I am pleased to announce six new members of the Hermosa Beach team. They include four new members in the police department. They are Michael Levine, Community Services Officer, Joanne Loza, Management Analyst, Sylvia Palma, Police Intern, Jessica Guin, Police Services Officer. We also welcome two new team members in our finance department. Accountants George Salante and Anna Bailey recently joined us to fill two crucial vacancies, and we are extremely pleased that all six of our new team members chose our city, Hermosa Beach. I also wanted to, before I turn it over to Captain Phillips for our update, I wanted to go back to our gas leak and really thank our residents and community members for their patience and their understanding. We realize what an inconvenience it was, and also unnerving to experience this yesterday, and that the repairs went on through the night and that it was disruptive. But everyone was understanding, and I wanted to just personally thank and acknowledge our community for being so understanding of this unfortunate situation. I'd also like to thank the staff for acting quickly and working around the clock with SoCal Gas and AT&amp;T to, to remedy the situation. With that, I wanted to mention that Chief LaBaron is tending to a personal matter this evening, and we have Captain Landon Phillips to join us and provide us with the police department update.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor DeToye, honorable councilmembers. The police department is continuously working to respond to the community and maintain the safety of the city. We'd like to report back on the excellent work being done by our detectives, our traffic enforcement, and our efforts to establish partnerships in the community. The mission statement of the Hermosa Beach Police Department is that we exist to make Hermosa Beach the safest little beach city through partnerships, integrity, and excellent service. And the points I want to talk about tonight are all about partnerships. So the police department continues to arrest bike thieves throughout the city, and we know that bike theft in the beach cities has been a problem for years, and we could not do this without the ongoing support of our local business community. Their willingness to be a part of the solution has made numerous felony arrests possible. In short, the businesses partner with us, and they help us to utilize their technology to capture crimes in progress. And that crime is later used as evidence to prosecute bike thieves in our city. As I mentioned, these are, these are felony arrests and filings that we're getting on bike theft in our city. Moving on to another point, a recent case investigated by our detectives will be solved thanks to some cutting-edge cellphone technology. On August 11th, a local business was burglarized, and cash and merchandise was stolen by the suspect. The first thing to point out here is the business was quick to report the crime and was willing to prosecute in this case. The business provided detailed information on the circumstances of the crime, which is very helpful for our detectives. And although video evidence was not the main piece of evidence, our detectives were able to utilize other resources available to them when the crime victims are proactive and willing to prosecute, as they were in this case. A suspect has been identified, and charges are forthcoming, followed by an arrest warrant in this case. Moving on to the next point, and as mentioned in previous reports by Chief LaBaron, the safety of our motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians continue to be a high priority for the police department. Since the last city council meeting, officers have been focused daily on traffic violations that are most impactful to our community and their safety. Specifically, we've responded to locations that are identified by our residents, our officers, and data about traffic accidents. Using that, we've targeted stop sign violations, loud exhaust violations, and other traffic sign violations. On September 16th, officers conducted a stop sign enforcement detail, which resulted in 23 stop sign violations and a total of 26 citations for that day alone, for that detail alone. And overall, since the last report to city council, officers have issued 32 citations for stop sign violations, five citations for loud or modified exhaust, and 12 citations for other traffic sign violations. These are just the enforcement efforts of these specific violations and don't include the other enforcement violation or enforcement of traffic and safety violations throughout the city just since two weeks ago. I want to talk about moving on to the next point, the partnerships and what we see in the immediate future. We are about to enter the holiday season, and as we all know, e-commerce in the holiday season increases, and that means additional packages being delivered to houses, businesses, residents. And that usually results in additional package theft throughout the community, and it's, it's the entire region. So we ask residents to partner with their neighbors, their community, and the police department to help combat this crime. So be mindful of package thefts and package deliveries to your residents or your neighbors, and be proactive. We encourage residents to use locker-type services, and I'm not endorsing any one business, but things like Amazon Locker, where you can have a package delivered to a location, it's locked and secured until you arrive there to pick up your package. Also, we encourage residents, set alerts on your e-commerce deliveries. A lot of services will deliver a text or an email when something is in transit or when it's been delivered. That way, the resident knows when it's delivered to their doorstep. And the partnership we encourage is with your neighbors and your community. If you have a package arrive on your doorstep, and you're notified via text or email, and you're not home, reach out to a neighbor, and maybe they can grab the package and hold on to it until you get home, and you do the same for them, vice versa. So this will help us to combat the package theft throughout the community as we get into the holiday season. And lastly, we'd like to advise the community that our next Coffee with a Cop will be Wednesday, October 5th, at 4:00 PM in Valley Park. This is National Coffee with a Cop Day, which is done by police departments throughout the country on the same day. And what better way to build partnerships than to have a cup of coffee and a friendly conversation? With that, Mayor DeToye, that concludes the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report, Captain Phillips, and Madam City Manager. Much to my colleagues for any questions. Councilwoman Campbell, you good? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to report probably something that's known, but I have seen not a lot, but a few more of the, the electric bikes on the green belt recently. And so it just occurred to me after seeing a couple, three in sort of a close period of time, that signage might eventually be something that could be needed to address the, you know, improper use of the green belt with an electric vehicle, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sorry.
I don't, that's already in the conversation. I just saw it recently, so I thought I'd bring it up. Thank you. Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you both for the report. Madam City Clerk, what's next?
Next, we have public participation, oral and written communications from the public. This is a time for members of the public to address the council on consent calendar items and items on and not on the agenda within the city council's jurisdiction. However, if you are here to address the city council on a municipal matter item or a public hearing item, we do encourage you to speak on the item when it is heard. If you do speak on a municipal matter or a public hearing item at this time, you will not be able to speak on the same item when it is heard at a later part of this meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and if you are joining this meeting by phone, please remember to dial star 6 to unmute yourself and star 9 to raise your hand. And participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute yourself, and please say your name for the record. And we will begin with public speaker cards submitted, and the first person we do have is Trent Larson.
All right. Thank you, City Council. I'd like to start tonight with the people in Florida and Hurricane Ian. And I think there's some, a lot of lessons here in, in looking at what's going on. There's a good chance then in our future, and you as leaders, you're going to have our own Governor Newsom versus Ron DeSantis going up against each other for president. There's a good chance. And if you look at California, and if you look at Florida, and the response to crises, you see a big difference. You know, Governor DeSantis is helping right now during the hurricane, and he's doing a lot, and there's a lot going on, and you can really see it. And I see our hurricane here in California as the homeless. That's like a big issue for me. It's getting worse. And I don't see Governor Newsom making it better. In fact, everything he offers, well-intended, goes bad. It makes it worse. It makes the homeless crisis worse. COVID-19, look at the COVID response, what Governor DeSantis did, keeping Florida open, open as soon as possible, versus what Governor Newsom did. Dictates and mandates and keeping us closed and forcing businesses to do this, that, and the other, and all these things with the vaccinations. You look at economic opportunity in the state of Florida, and who's moving there? I think we all know people who used to live around here that moved to Florida. I certainly do. And they move there because they can pay for a house, have a job, and meet the bills. And here, it's very hard. And, you know, Governor Newsom isn't seeming to make that better. In fact, California's stagnation and loss. And that, that's not good. Freedom and choice, and especially like over the vaccinations, there was a complete difference there in Governor DeSantis and Governor Newsom. And the environment, which California leads the way in a lot of ways in the environmental, what Governor Newsom wants to do. But you look at the environment like I understand it. I think that humans, we are part of the environment. Yes, we, we have ability to control what we do, but our environment is extremely important. And Governor DeSantis allowed Florida's environment for people to prosper, which makes it cleaner, safer, better, stronger. Governor Newsom, our people have gotten poorer, more dangerous. Things are going bad, and he doesn't seem to have any answers. And so, you know, we've got, we've got a choice down the road, and I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I cut chalk this up. This is civics lesson, and I'll leave time on the clock. Okay.
Next, we have Dean Francois. Dean, your three minutes will begin once you introduce yourself.
Good evening, Dean Francois, longtime Hermosa Beach resident. I consider myself a steward of the environment. Oh, and I am a candidate for Hermosa Beach City Council. Uh, I'd like to talk a moment about transparency. It is the backbone of my campaign and why I'm running for city council. And I've noticed that some candidates are chiming onto this transparency, and that's great. I think that, that the more transparent we can be about transparency, the better we'll all be. But it's important that we know what we mean when we say transparency. And it starts with how we conduct business here, and that items on our agenda put before the public have all the information for an informed decision and for the people to provide the proper input. And that's so important for our democracy to continue, especially at the local level. So when people provide input, they can only provide input on what's being provided in the reports and what's out there. And when there's a suspicion that there's other things going on that we don't know about, it creates this turmoil that can happen. So I ask when people come down to the podium and speak that you listen to the input that everyone has to say, whether you agree with them or not, because when I get elected and I hear people criticize me and say things that I disagree with, I'm going to include that input and try to mold it into what's going to work for the city as a whole. Now, why I'm bringing this up tonight is because on tonight's agenda, you do have the Clean Power Alliance. I've submitted my written comments in the ecomments, and they're located in the back as well. And it's a long, detailed plan of how I think we can make the Clean Power Alliance work for the citizens of Hermosa Beach. I'm not sure we're there yet with the way it's presented today. I'll reserve later for my comments if I can make it back, because I've got a Zoom meeting to go to. But the important point I wanted to make is that we listen to what everyone says. Doesn't matter how much you don't like them, just listen and provide the input, and try to avoid coming back and criticizing people like they don't know what they're talking about, because we are all basing our input on the information we have and not much else. So in summary, I hope you can take that in consideration when you think about it tonight. I think we can make it work. Hopefully, people can be placed in the lowest tier. It wasn't in the staff report, the lowest tier and not the 100% green plan tier, which is the highest cost tier for the rate payer. After all, that's what's most important. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Scott Rusher.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name's Scott Rusher. I'm a 54-year resident of Manhattan Beach, California. I want to thank you as well as the Parks and Rec Department for allowing the South Bay Paddle Board Race. The South Bay Paddle is a 15-mile paddleboard race and a three-mile prone paddleboard race that starts and finishes at the Hermosa Pier in the first weekend in June. This past year, we had 78 paddlers, including five women, for the 15-mile long course, and 12 paddlers for the short course, including four women, and three were under 18. The long course is a Catalina Classic qualifying race, which is the 32-mile paddleboard race from Catalina, Ismus, to the Manhattan Beach Pier. This year's conditions for the South Bay Paddle were really tough due to the big swell and the big surf. Everyone that started finished, but we did end up with 12 water bottles, three chinrests, and two hats that washed up on shore. The South Bay Paddle doesn't happen without the local support from the South Bay Board Riders, the Easy Reader, and Waterman's Restaurants. But most importantly, it doesn't happen without local support from city council and Park and Rec. So I want to thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Daniel Godwin.
Good evening, City Council and all the residents dialing in and participating this evening. As many of you know, I'm also running for city council as one of the candidates, and I'm here tonight to speak on a couple of different issues. Actually, Dean Francois spoke on two of the items that I will also speak to. So the first that he mentioned was the issue of transparency. And throughout my military career, as well as Colonel Jackson, Colonel Raymond Jackson, once learned his perception is reality. Okay, so that doesn't necessarily mean what you guys are doing is real, but what's being perceived by your audience may be otherwise. So some of the items and general feedback that I've received over the last couple of months, things that we can improve on is providing earlier agendas, better visibility of public comments, provide, provide better insight in the closed-door sessions, and improve public participation by ensuring public notices are posted in the local newspaper, and also not cutting out the second reading of proposed ordinances. Again, this is general feedback. I'm sure you guys have done a lot to improve transparency, but a lot of the active and concerns residents, these are some of the observations that they've made. Also, another different topic. I know all of you have voted to put forward Measure B, which is increasing the sales tax in Hermosa from nine and a half percent to 10.25%. I actually wrote the opposing argument against this measure. Americans are already experiencing near-record high inflation rates, and it's time to keep our government fiscally responsible. We need to stop deflecting our problems by taxing our residents. One other item that Dean Francois already spoke on, this is going to be a contentious topic tonight, is the Community Choice Aggregation Program. A lot of people have been voicing their concerns over the last month. I actually, to be honest, wasn't aware about this program until numerous other residents brought it to my attention. I do side on the, I do side that we should not vote for this program. The city needs to take a long, hard look at the liability and inflexibility it brings us, as well as the excess costs that our residents are going to have to pay. Again, we already pay a premium to live in Hermosa. A lot of us have already seen our power bills go up, gas bills go up, groceries, everything. For those that would like to attend, I'm actually holding a mixer on October 7th, next Friday, from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Decadence Bar at the pier. So for residents that would like to meet me and hear what I have to say, feel free to come next Friday night. For more information on my campaign, feel free to visit danforhermosa.com, and I look forward to seeing everyone next Friday. Thank you for your time.
No other public comments. Speaker cards were received. Sure, come on up. I have one for CPA or the CCA, but.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Sorry. This is general comment. Thank you. Um, I'm just going to say that there's going to be a big change on this council in only a few short months. And I think it's disrespectful for you guys to be jamming through a CCA at, at this juncture. It's just not right. I want to make sure all the Hermosa Beach residents realize that what this is going to mean is an increase in your utility bills. So Hermosa So Hermosa Beach residents, pay attention. What it says in the staff report is, we must reduce emissions. We must do something now. What does that mean? That means that they're going to change the energy mix of the portfolio that the residents will be in. So just to give somebody, just to give everybody just kind of a primer, because it's very complicated. Every utility in the state of California must adhere to a renewable portfolio standard. It could be a utility, it could be a CCA, it could be Edison or CCA, it does not matter. We're headed down that path anyway. But the difference with a CCA is control, controlled by a city council that has a seat on the JPA. That's the difference. And this is why people should pay attention to that staff report, because what Redondo Beach is doing is they're going to pretty soon default all of their residents into that green power option. And people in Hermosa Beach, you're not going to realize this is happening. You're going to get dumped into one of these plans that most likely is going to be more expensive. And then one day you're going to wake up, but by then it will be too late, because you cannot exit out of this CCA once they have purchased power purchase agreements on your behalf, and they purchased long-term power agreements. You cannot leave after whatever that 90-day time window is. So I advise every Hermosa Beach resident, exit as soon as you can, as soon as this thing comes forward, or you will not have a choice. Something else, the staff report does not tell anybody what this Clean Power Alliance's financials are. I guess they just gave you guys a PowerPoint presentation. Did you know that in the last fiscal year, they budgeted to lose $27 million? That's what they budgeted to lose, $27 million. You also cannot find their credit rating on their website. That's suspect. They did not end up losing $27 million, but they budgeted for that. In addition, the staff report notes that when they bring on Hermosa Beach, they're expecting to lose $800,000 to $900,000 when they bring Hermosa Beach on. What kind of business model is that? You budget to lose $27 million? You budget to bring on clients that are going to lose money for the CCA? This makes no sense, but none of this stuff is in the staff report. Other CCAs have gone bankrupt, but of course, no mention of that. Riverside went bankrupt. One in Palm Springs went bankrupt. Why did the Palm Springs one go bankrupt? Because of the RA contracts that they had with Edison. Does everybody understand what resource adequacy is? Most likely not. This is why politicians should not be in the power business. It is complicated. I will just say that this should be discussed at length with the community before you do anything like this. And residents of Hermosa Beach, if this actually moves forward, opt out. Thank you.
Seeing no other in-person comment related to general public comment. We will move over to virtual public comment. At this time, we do have a 310 phone number with a virtual hand raise. Your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Hello. Hello, this is Tracy. Please play the video.
Hi, Tracy. Um, we do not, I don't believe we have a video for you to play. Did you submit a video to the city clerk?
I did, and she said she received it and, uh, that they would be able to play it.
One second, please.
Okay.
I apologize for that. The video will now be played.
Thank you.
The problem we have is that there's a tremendous amount of misinformation, misinformation, a lot of which is on social media. In order to be opposed to moving forward with this, you would have to discount a mountain of actual real-world data. You would have to discount the value that municipal utilities statewide. You would have to discount that every operating CCA right now in the state of California is charging lower rates than the for-profit utility in their area. You would have to discount the growth in the supply of renewable energy, the fact that the market for energy is fundamentally changing. According to the federal government, in 2015, 2,000, 2/3 of the energy, new energy generating capacity to the grid was wind and solar. 1/3 was natural gas. Virtually zero was coal, thankfully for all of us and for the planet, thankfully for all of us and for the planet. You would have to discount that there is a stream of cities across California that are considering starting or joining a CCA or have recently done it. Seven cities alone in Marin Choice Energy. You would have to discount the fact that Marin Choice Energy is operating at a net surplus. But you would have to second guess all those agencies and their auditors. You would know better how to read their financial statements about what their cash position is. You would have to discount the projections we've been provided by the experts about what our revenue balance would be for our CCA, rather than sending it up to Edison so that they can pay their CEO $14 million a year. You could look at the projections for revenue for what LA County is doing, which say basically the same thing, the same thing as for us, the same thing as for Marin, the same thing as for Sonoma, the same thing as for every other CCA. They are net revenue positive. You would have to discount the fact that in reports submitted to the California Energy Commission about the amount of renewable energy they have, that Marin Choice Energy is beating Pacific Gas and Electric by 52% to 30%. You would have to discount the fact that Sonoma Clean Power is beating PG&E by 37% to 30%. And you would have to discount the fact that our consultants are telling us that we can provide 50% renewable energy for half a percent less for our base rate than what Edison is charging you today for 24% renewable energy. And you would also have to discount a similar projection for the LA County CCA. I want to support it. I'm absolutely supportive of the town hall.
Next, do we have any other virtual public comment at this time? Ken Allen, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Please play the video I sent you.
Um, you know what? Not satisfactory to me, because I don't buy that this isn't going to cost us more money. And I don't believe that it could cost, it should cost a quarter of a million dollars to construct a bathroom. I absolutely disagree with that. So I think we need to have a public conversation. These are public funds. So please, we need to have a public conversation about why it's going to cost a quarter of a million dollars per bathroom. Okay, because the community deserves to hear this.
Okay, so the point of the video is not to beat the bathrooms to death. By now, it is completely obvious to even the uninvolved in Hermosa Beach that the entire project is a mess. With the cost overruns now approaching three times what Carolyn Petty pointed out is a ridiculously high number. The true cost of today's bathrooms is hidden, and it, we don't know what it is. We don't know what the legal cost is. From what I've seen, they're hiding sewer fee money. We have no idea. That what Carolyn Petty said, uh, over four years ago is that this is, that this is a joke. Now, this is not to bring up the point of the bathroom. The point of this is to demonstrate that we need to specifically point out what Justin Massey says. You cannot believe a word Justin Massey says. He needs to be thoroughly questioned. Over five years ago, I asked for a simple vote of the people on CCA, a simple vote. Justin Massey's exact words were, if we were to put everything to a vote of the people, the wheels of government would come to a grinding hall. That was five years ago, Justin Massey. And now you continue to push disinformation and, more importantly, misinformation. Fast forward to today, Justin is, Justin Massey is trying to ram through this with no resident input. The town hall that Justin said he was in favor of simply never happened. There is no town hall. So he was lying then, and he's lying now because he's a liar. Here's a fact. Only decoy, excuse me, Detoy, has self-admittedly said he opted into SCE Green Power. I think it's a very safe bet to say that Justin Massey did not opt into green power. And he can prove me wrong, and I, and he can just simply say it tonight. None of the other council members have opted into green power. This entire mess, mess needs to be delayed. Here's a fact, Justin, CCA will add cost to the residents, period, beginning and end of stories. All CCAs report higher costs to the customers, and several CCAs currently are now either bankrupt or under investigation like Orange County, that, if like Orange County CCA. You saw the video, how, how Justin Massey treats the residents, uh, the residents of Hermosa Beach. You can only imagine how he treats the residents of his own home. Thank you.
As a reminder, any public comment made on items in a municipal matter um, section or in the public hearing section will not be able to speak on the same item at the later part of the agenda. And Matt McCool, your hand is up, and you are now being unmuted, and you can begin your three minutes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Good evening, Mayor Troy, city council staff, Matt McCool. I'm, I am a candidate for city council, and tonight I'm calling in regarding CCA. Before I do that, I noticed to, to my fellow candidates in the audience, I spoke about transparency, and that is the number one issue. Everyone's talking about it. I agree with both of them. I want to give you an idea. Transparency has been an ongoing issue, where Councilmember Massey says it's pure fiction. No, Councilmember Massey, it is reality TV that we have a major transparency issue in the city and the city government. I'll give you a perfect example, the CCA staff report. There was so much information that was withheld. I actually had to go ahead and send in a request. We spent $10,000 on a report for a study. And I had to ask her, why was that not included? There was no analysis. I got an executive study. There was nothing there. So as far as CCA, I want to go ahead and start saying this. Opposing a CCA does not mean opposing renewable energy. I want to say that again, because I'm going to emphasize this as much as I possibly can. Opposing CCA does not mean opposing renewable energy. The CCA is a flawed business model, and it was shown over and over again. That video that was played earlier of Councilman Massey, that was from six years ago, about discrediting this, discrediting that, discrediting this. Well, you know what? Six years later, Councilman Massey, you were wrong. And the guys here who supported opposing CCA were right, and you were wrong. And that is an absolute fact. You cannot refute that. But what this is really about here tonight is why this is being pushed through, because Councilman Massey knows he's got two votes that are going away, and this is gone. And this is why I'm running for city council. We've had, for the last five years, probably 98% 5-0 votes. No opposition to anything, and that's what's going through tonight. So I can tell you exactly what's going to happen here tonight. This is going to go through. You're going to be opted into 100% renewable energy, no questions asked. The only question here tonight, whether it's going to be a 5-0 vote or a 4-1 vote, and we, we all know who that one might not be. So that, that's where we are, and that's where we're going. But Councilman Massey, I want to go ahead as far as discounting these reports. We have known Marin Clean Energy was busted for greenwashing their portfolio. They were trading in wrecks. They were frauds. They're liars. You want to discount, discount our, uh, consultants? Juan Matute is a fraud. His report that is submitted in that 2005 carbon neutrality report is a fraud. Carolyn Petty, when she was on the council, called it out. And speaking of Carolyn Petty, when we decided to go ahead and go with Lancaster Choice, she is a financial operations person, but what she did that night was perform complete surgery on their financials. Lancaster Choice was a complete fraud. We would be out millions and millions of dollars if we had formed our own CCA. And Councilman Massey, as far as that 14 million that you're talking about that's going over to Southern California Edison, you don't know the fact that, you know what, 80% of your electrical cost is in distribution, not electrical charges. That's my time. That's my piece. Thank you, Matt McCool, city council.
Hi, we have another 310 number. Um, you'll go ahead and be unmuted at this time. I do not recall if you already spoke during public comment. If you could please introduce yourself once you're unmuted.
That's a repeat. That's a repeat. I've presented already. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other virtual public comment at this time? There are no virtual hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Perfect. One last call for public comment. If you're joining us in person, you can just approach the dais. If you're joining us virtually, you can mouse down on the bottom of your screen, raise a virtual hand, or you can dial star nine to raise a virtual hand if you're joining us on telephone. Seeing no one at the dais, and no other hands raised, I'll close public comment. And look for a motion for the written communication.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. A motion from Councilwoman Armatto.
Assuming it's a motion to receive and file, I second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification. And the second, Councilmember Massey. Any other comments on the communication? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Armatto.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor Detoy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Assistant City Attorney, uh, we did add a supplemental general public comment item to house the general public comments submitted for today's agenda for open session. Do we need a motion to approve that and receive and file that, or no?
No, that's fine.
The next item is items removed from the consent calendar. So we do have, um, next is a consent calendar, and the council can remove and pull items off for a separate discussion. I'm sorry, city council member comments.
Thank you. Look to my colleagues for any comments. If they respond to public comment, ask questions for clarification, or make a brief announcement on the report, uh, for activities or meetings. Yes, Councilmember Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to respond to one of the comments that was made, um, by our friend, Mr. Larson. It was related to an issue that's above our level of government, but California versus Florida in terms of its COVID response. It was said that essentially Florida's done better both in public health outcomes as well as economic outcomes. That's unfortunately contrary to the data. Uh, California has a lower death rate than Florida does per capita and stronger economic performance. UCLA Anderson School, in its quarterly report, evaluated all the states, compared their economic performance. And across the board, the states that imposed COVID restrictions to protect public health performed better economically during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic than states that did not. So we hear this kind of rhetoric a lot, uh, but it's actually contrary to the facts underlying the assessment of the situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? I do have a few. Want to go ahead? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that, uh, on Sunday, I had the pleasure of joining the chamber in celebrating the one-year anniversary of the Lane Nail Bar on Hermosa Avenue. It was a wonderful event, packed full of supporters, um, colleagues and residents. And if you haven't been there, it's a great facility, wonderful family. They were appreciative of the support they've received from the community, as well as from the, uh, fellow businesses within our city. And they also spoke glowingly about the city, the city staff, and the assistance they received in starting their business during a challenging time, the pandemic. Um, and they even compared doing business in Hermosa with several other cities in which they have businesses, and, uh, we rank higher than those other cities. So shout out to the city and staff, and, uh, happy anniversary to Lane Nail Bar.
Thank you for that. One other thing you forgot is you're at the ribbon cutting, the re-ribbon cutting for Good Stuff. Um, so we attended that, was it yesterday? Yesterday. So they opened in 1980, so 42 years of service to this community, and, um, they just did a nice renovation at Good Stuff, and, uh, they just did a nice renovation at Good Stuff and, uh, the restaurant looks great and, um, Chris was very complimentary of the city working through those renovations. And so it was a great, great, uh, event, again, while attended. Um, I know Councilman Massey will be relieved that we did have our monthly sanitation district meeting. Um, nothing reportable there. Um, I personally attended the, uh, Athens quarterly or do they semi annually, the, the paper shredding and the compost giveaway. So I was contributed with a paper and also took some compost for some home garden. Showed up the right time. It was very well attended as well. And then Madam City Manager and I attended our supervisor Holly Mitchell does, um, I think she said semi annually as well. Um, all the mayors and city managers get invited. Um, so there was Mayor Bill Brand, Drew Boils, Daniel Lee from Culver City, uh, Mayor Protem from Hawthorne, David Patterson. There was also some other city managers. Just kind of introduction to her team and all the services the county can provide. And so it was a good, good event, um, earlier this week. Um, and that's all I have for events. Any other announcements? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, consent calendar, please.
Next we have consent calendar. This is a time for the city council to either approve the consent calendar as it's listed or to pull items off for a separate discussion.
Councilwoman Armatto.
I'll move to approve.
A motion from Councilwoman Armatto to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Second from Councilman Massey. Any comments, questions, or desires to pull an item off consent? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Armatto.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor Detoy.
Aye.
Motion carries. We do not have any separate items removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion. And the next item is item 13A, Introduction of an Ordinance of the City of Hermosa Beach, California, Amending Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 12.30, Special Events on Public Property, Section 12.30.030, Special Event Approval and Permit Issuance, and Finding the Same Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and Approval of the Parks Recreation and Community Resources Advisory Commission's Recommended Special Events Policy Guide Updates.
Thank you for reading that wonderfully into the record. Uh, this public hearing is now open and I welcome Director Nichols to present.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Tonight's public hearing is regarding special events policy guide updates, some of which would require an amendment to the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code. The Special Events Policy Guide serves as a comprehensive document for event producers of information they would need to know to hold an event in the city, including the approval process and applicable fees. During the approval process for 2022 special events, it became clear that a review was needed of specific policies within the guide. At its meeting on January 25th, city council directed staff to work with the special event subcommittee to further define community benefit as it relates to the fee waiver grant program and the long-term agreement program within the special events policy guide. Then at the Parks Recreation and Community Resources Advisory Commission's meeting on Thursday, June 16th, commission requested staff work with the subcommittee to review the guide in its entirety and consider modifications to the peak season limits since we have exceeded the impact level three limits this year and in prior years. And to review the public hearing and event noticing requirements. Staff in the subcommittee then met in June to form recommendations for special event policy guide updates. And these recommendations were presented to the commission at their meeting on July 5th. Included in your staff report as attachment nine is a table of the proposed policy modifications that we are recommending tonight by staff and the commission. And the first three modifications are to modify the impact characteristic matrix. This matrix is the tool that we use to define the impact level of an event. So the first being to remove the characteristic that uses the total amount of years that an event has been held in Hermosa Beach to determine its impact level. The number of years that an event has taken place here in the city does not change the impact level the event has on the city, the community, or staff resources. Additionally, leaving this characteristic means that any new event to the city may be deemed an impact level three event, even if it is of lower impact. The second is to add a characteristic to the matrix, which considers the extent of use of the volleyball courts and the beach tennis courts within the commercial zone. So be to consider whether an event is using just the north side volleyball, volleyball courts or just the south side volleyball courts or both, and whether the event would impact the beach tennis courts to determine the impact level of an event. When event producers request use of both the north side and the south side volleyball courts and impact the use of the beach tennis courts, it does impact our ability to program other recreational activities such as classes or camps and also the community's general use and enjoyment of those courts. Which is why the extent of usage by an event of these courts should be considered when determining the impact level of any event. The third is to remove the characteristic that considers the total number of events held per year to determine the impact level. Leaving this characteristic, we continue to categorize low impact events such as the CBVA volleyball tournaments or the beach tennis tournaments, for example, as impact level three because of the fact that they have five or more tournaments throughout the year. So for example, CBVA did have a total of nine tournaments in 2022 and beach tennis did have a total of seven events in 2022. So with this characteristic removed from the matrix, it will allow both of those events to be accurately categorized as impact level two and not impact level three as they have been. And that would result in less impact level three event days within the peak season, further preventing us from exceeding our limits in the peak season. The fourth modification is regarding the public hearing requirement for returning impact level three events. Now it is currently required for all impact level three events, whether they are returning or not, and any new event to the city to be reviewed and considered for approval through a public hearing at both the commission and city council level. And public hearings do require additional steps to be taken to meet the public noticing requirements of both the community resources department and the city clerk's office. And public hearings are at a cost to the city. Staff in the commission are, are proposing that only new events require a public hearing. And public hearings do serve as an additional tool to inform and invite the public to provide input. And we would recommend that this remain for any new event to the city. But we are recommending that returning impact level three events that have already went through this public hearing process in prior years not be required to continue to go through one each year. Unless there was a significant change to the event format. So unless they were considering additional locations or additional event days or increasing their attendance levels, for example. And the last modification on this attachment that I'm referencing, referencing is referencing our peak season limits. So our peak season is from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And the limits are only set to consider the events on the beach strand or pier plaza. So staff in the commission are recommending that we increase our peak season event limits to a total of 45 event days instead of 30. And that we decrease our impact level two or one events from 40 event days to 25. So adjusting these amounts would allow for all returning impact level three events that have been on our special event calendar consecutively for more than a year to continue to be held in the city. And it would stay consistent with our overall total of 70 special event days allotted in the peak season in our origin, original policy for the beach strand and pier pass, pier plaza locations. It should be noted that these, these proposed limits that we are suggesting tonight are still only going to leave maybe one or two impact level three event days in the peak season for events on the beach strand or pier plaza. So we may not be able to accommodate new impact level three event requests in these locations in future years during the peak season. Unless a returning event was to move outside of the peak season, reduce their total event days, or they chose not to return. However, we did set these limits to balance coastal access with beach events. Therefore, staff in the commission do not recommend increasing the impact level three event limits any more than we have proposed tonight. These modifications that I have covered do result in the amendments outlined in attachment 10 to the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code. We have also included in your staff report, another attachment, attachment a level, attachment 11 that is outlining the, um, special event policy guide additions that are recommended by staff and the commission. And the first addition that we are recommending is that the city would not permit more than a maximum of two events on any given day in the city. Managing more than two events per day is impactful to staff resources. And this recommendation also strives to further provide the balance between our permits, programs, and the community's general use and enjoyment of our beaches, um, our beach parks and open spaces. And the next addition is that only returning events may request a fee waiver grant. So the commission may assess the event's community benefit before committing to providing financial support. And the next is in a effort to limit the impact to the beach tennis recreational play from special events. So currently, event producers may request to remove the beach tennis courts to accommodate their event footprint on the north side of the pier. And if approved, the courts are removed. And it leaves no opportunity for beach tennis play unless the beach tennis community is to set up their own courts and remove them each night as temporary courts cannot stay up overnight per the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code. So this year in the months of July and August, it became apparent to staff that the impact events have on this form of recreational play as our special event calendar this year initially proposed removal of the courts during the peak season for almost six weeks total. So while staff was able to work through this, um, for the months of July and August with the event producers and provide temporary courts, we are recommending this be an adopted policy to solve this issue for future years. And it would be that any event requesting removal of the beach tennis courts provide either an event footprint that would allow for at least three of the permanent beach tennis courts to remain or for the event producers to be responsible for setting up and providing temporary beach tennis courts that would be available for general public use if they are requesting removal of all the permanent beach tennis courts. So we have discussed this recommendation with all events that this would be required of in future years to provide no surprises to all of our event organizers. And additionally, I wanted to note that all the special event producers were notified of this meeting this evening and provided access to the staff report to be aware to all the policy modifications and additions that we're discussing this evening. I have a couple more. I know this is a very long verbal staff report, so thank you for bearing with me. The next addition is for additional language to the fee waiver grant program and long-term agreement program in an attempt to further define our community benefit and what would be requested of event producers to demonstrate that to the commission. The criteria formed was after review of best practice research of other organizations and how they defined community benefit and each program's applications and the information requested to demonstrate community benefit. And also with the goals and priorities outlined in Plan Hermosa. So our last addition is to include in the fee waiver grant programs application that the event producer provide detail as to why a fee waiver is important to the success of their event. And this would further assist the commission um, on determining whether or not they will approve a fee waiver grant as they review each request. So again, I know this was a lengthy report and I appreciate you for bearing with me. This does conclude my verbal and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions? Councilman Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Lisa, the change from a maximum of 30 level three events, third, level three event days to 45 level three event days and a corresponding reduction of a maximum of 40 level one and two event days down to 25 event days. Can you explain to me what the purpose of that was and what the anticipated effect of that is? Because looking at it on the surface, it looks like we're going to have a lot more of our higher impact event days out there uh, in exchange for fewer low impact event days. And that frankly, on the surface seems to move us in the direction of having more programming on the beach, more large events, which is counter to what I understood the review, uh, intending to look at.
Certainly I can speak to that and provide further background. We actually have exceeded our impact level three event days in the peak season significantly over the past few calendar years. And when we made these recommendations to increase those numbers, we did look at the calendar, the previous calendar years and the events that have been longstanding events in the city in the, in the peak season. And the numbers that we're recommending are to accommodate those returning events. So we wouldn't be adding any additional impact level three events to the calendar. We would be just honoring those that have continued to be on the calendar year after year. And in reducing the impact level two event days, it's not going to negatively impact any of our returning impact level two events either because we oftentimes only have a couple impact level twos throughout that season. So we wanted to be able to accommodate those that have been returning events in the city for more than just one year with our, that are considered impact level three and wanted to provide a number that would do so. If we were to reduce the number any lower than 45, it would knock off a returning impact level three event being able to be part of our peak season.
And that would be such as a volleyball tournament in the summer.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Director. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I had a similar question to that, knowing or bringing your staff report, you said that, um, you know, CBVA, who has quite a few weekend events throughout the whole season wouldn't be a level three anymore. They would drop down to a lower level. So I assume that shift would work with how you described it.
Yes, it would. So we actually are at, I believe we're at 56 impact level three event days within the peak season in 2022. That's how far we exceeded it. So when we figured these new numbers and recommendations, we were considering all the other policy updates that we are recommending. So that's considering the fact that CBVA and beach tennis would be able to be categorized as impact level two during the peak season. And that 45, that recommended 45 is with that in mind.
Okay. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions or staff? Councilman Campbell, you're good? All right. Um, now we'd open up for public comments. Madam City Clerk.
Each speaker is limited to three minutes. And if you are joining the meeting by phone, please do remember to dial star six to unmute yourself and star nine to raise your virtual hand. Participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute yourself and please say your name for the record. We did receive two speaker cards. The first is from Trent Larson.
Hello, city council. Um, I love special events. I think it's hard to have too many of them, especially during our peak season. And I'm not particularly worried about the size of the special events down on the beach. I think, you know, in most of these cases, the bigger the better. And I think this is a real good conversation, especially Councilman Massey weighing in about, about COVID and our response. Um, we need special events. This, this state of California has been locked up tight for a long time and it's caused a lot of harm. And the more that we get people outside, the healthier it is for them. Uh, you know, earlier I, I listened to the retort and I was thinking that I can only imagine that the Burger King king was running down the field and he blushed so hard he fumbled. Because size matters and the Whopper you just told about cherry picking stats makes the General Sherman tree look small. I mean, that is, those are cherry picking. And, and this goes to the bigger thing about cherry picking stats and trying to prove a point. I, I don't like cherry picking stats. I try not to do it. I say make your point so people can understand it and know where you're coming from. And then we can all try to figure a way to make it better. So, you know, Justin, Florida has done a lot better. I mean, I don't know how much you get out and see people around. I go from San Diego up to Bakersfield and all through public entities, enterprise. And I'm telling you right now, California is not doing better than Florida. And no matter how you cherry pick it, and you can cherry pick it, like everything, it's not overall better. So that's my point. Have lots of special events, enjoy.
Next, we have Daniel Godwin.
Hello, I'll make this quick. I am Dan Godwin. For the briefer, this is a question to Ms. Nichols. It's kind of hard to track the context of this conversation when you're saying level three, level two, level one. Maybe I missed it in your brief. I apologize, but I was wondering if you can describe the difference between them. And I believe it comes down to the number of attendees. And I have reviewed the special permits and the process as well as municipal code, but it's been a little while and I think it's hard for the residents to track the definitions of each of these types of events. Thank you.
Do we have any other in-person public comment at this time? Seeing none, we do have Tony Higgins. Tony, your three minutes will begin once you are unmuted.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You know, it, it appears to me that, that for a few years, we were overbooking the level three events. And what we're doing now is simply normalizing the overbooking. That bothers me a little bit because for years I went to the Parks and Recreation meetings and they promised that they were going to do an objective scientific survey of the community that determined which events had broad community support and which didn't. Not a survey written by the city manager, you know, to achieve an outcome, not a survey written by the Chamber of Commerce, but a survey scientifically written to determine what events, level three events mainly, had broad community support. And we still haven't done that. And I hope some of the candidates for city council are considering that. Finally, on, on a related topic, I really wish you guys would get out there and find out what the residents want. Anyway, on a related topic, parking enforcement during these large events in the May fifteenth to September fifteenth, one-hour zones was non-existent. So we're, we're going to be having events and we really don't have a method to enforce the one-hour limits in the residential areas, at least as far as I've been told. And so that's just another thing. I wish you guys would kick around a little bit and thank you for your time. Bye-bye.
Next, we have Kent Allen. Kent, your three minutes will begin once you are unmuted.
Yes, I'd like to publicly thank Trent Larson for calling out the obvious about the whoppers that Justin Massey says. There's a saying, I think that people are saying out there when it comes to these events, how do you know Justin Massey is lying? His lips are moving. That's how you know. Thank you.
Next, we have Matt McCool. Matt, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Hello, Mayor Toy. City Council staff, Matt McCool. I wanted to follow up on this specific topic is that these are the types of issues that the city councils should be discussing. I'm glad to see that we have so many candidates that are actually focusing our beach culture. This is what it's about. This is what we should be discussing. I love the events here. This is what our brand is, our beach culture brand. For the last five years, you and the council have tried to rebrand Hermosa Beach as the green idea city. We know about this. We've gone battled over many, many years, the Robert Fortinato Green Idea House to rebrand Hermosa Beach to Green Idea City. And the reason why you guys failed and why two of you are not seeking reelection and why we won and you lost is this is a beach culture town. And these events should be our premier events. This should be discussed at city council. This is what city council is all about. I appreciate all the great work that Ms. Nichols has done and the staff and even working in the years past with Kelly Orton. But this is what defines us. This is what our city is about. This is what we should be discussing. And I'm looking forward to having two brand-new candidates, council members on the next city council so we can focus on these types of events. That's my time. Thank you. Good night.
Next, we have J.C. J.C., your three minutes will begin once you're needed.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to comment on the thing you guys are talking about. I live on Manhattan Avenue between Tenth and Eighth Street. And I have a great little original cottage. I found a three-bedroom. It's a miracle. I don't have a parking spot and I have two children. And I just want to say that even though I got a permit, I just have one car. I got like eight hundred dollars at least of parking tickets this summer because I, you know, I'm out a lot, like driving my kids around. I'm working and I'll come home and there would be literally nowhere to park whatsoever. There's a few spots on my street. The rest are driveways. The person on my street has six cars. He has permits for all of them. He just leaves them on the street. Okay? But the thing is, is like, I feel like the parking situation is really not right. I, I don't feel like the residents have anywhere to go. Like, there is nowhere to go if you can't find a spot. The meters don't matter. Like, the permits don't matter. So maybe I would really love it if you guys would consider some sort of like, like lot that's just for, you know, permits or like whatever, something like that. Because of course, the beach events are the best. It's so much fun. It's amazing. I can like hear the concerts from my house, but you know, the tickets, it's just, it's like I buy the permit, but then I just get the tickets anyway. Sometimes I'll be driving around for over an hour and I can't even find a spot. You know, I have to park at CVS. And, you know, so I'm just saying like, there are a lot of people like me and there's a lot of people who have like five permits, six permits for all their cars. But then, you know, it's just even with a permit, that really doesn't help very much during the summer. And it's like so nice right now because there's actually parking spots. So, you know, please like take that into account and maybe that's a little off topic, but I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioner Elman.
Good evening. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is, it was pretty obvious during Lisa's report that she has done an amazing job. And I couldn't be happier to sit on the subcommittee with her, work on something, a project like this and know that she's the person who will be reporting to you. I just ecstatic that this report is as good as it is. And I wanted to just let Mr. Godwin know that if he would look at the report, I believe it's page five, there is a description. Because Lisa is so good at her job. Thank you very much for your time. And again, I just, we are trying really hard. I, I heard the last speaker and I can assure her that we are working at trying to make the events work for the residents a little bit more in the coming year. Thank you very much.
And I do not see any other virtual hands raised, Mayor.
Perfect. If you'd like to speak on this item regarding special events, please approach the dais or if you're joining us virtually, mouse down the bottom of your screen, raise your virtual hand. Joining us by telephone, you can dial star nine. Seeing no one at the dais and no virtual hands raised. I will close the public comments. And look for a motion before deliberation. Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the subcommittee. Thank you to Director Nichols. Generally, this is good work. The two things I had questions about were the one that I asked about. I think it is a fair comment that essentially we're moving the goalposts to accommodate an overage in the highest impact events in the city. So that's a bit of a concern. And I submit for the council's consideration that we may want to take a look at the shift in numbers. Adding fifteen days is, there's nothing magic to it. It ultimately accommodates the full calendar of special events that we've approved for the last several years. But if we took five of those days, put them back in the level one and two column, that means basically one less event during the peak season. If we took ten days, it's probably two less events during the season. So we have some discretion there to achieve a balance that we think serves the community. And then my other comment for consideration is at the bottom of page six of the red line of the policy. It's currently says, any returning event requesting a significant change to event format, including location, total event days, or estimated attendance and spectator total may be subject to the application, submitted deadlines and approval process outlined for new events at the discretion of the Community Resources Manager. I think we ought to consider changing that to shall be subject to the new application approval process. In other words, if they're going to make significant changes to their event by adding event days or adding attendance, we ought to give consideration to whether they should go through the process again, the full-blown vetting process again. An intermediate step would be that they shall go through that process if they're going to make a significant change to their event, unless in the discretion of the Community Resources Manager, that full process is not, is not necessary because the sum total of the impacts of the changed event will not be substantially different than the impacts of the event previously approved, something along those lines. So those are the two areas that jumped out at me as areas that we ought to talk through and make sure that we're all comfortable with the revisions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll pass it over to Director Nichols to see if there's any response to those two items. Or the thought process behind them.
Certainly. First, speaking to the impact level three event days during the peak season, if it would be helpful for the council, I can share the number that we're, that we're recommending, what events that would be representing in the peak season. They have been, as I stated, a part of the special event calendar. I mean, really since the adoption of our special event policy guide. So that's why we found ourselves exceeding our impact level three limits in the way that we have for as many years as we have. So I can share those events with the council. I'll go ahead and list those. The events during the peak season that these numbers are accommodating are the Fiesta Hermosa events, our AVP event, the two volleyball tournaments that follow that, the JVA and BBCA National Championships and the AAU Junior National Championships, our International Surf Festival, the triathlon, and that would be actually, that sums up the events that these numbers would be accommodating. So in lowering the limit anymore, it would cause one of these events to need to move out of the peak season or not be part of our special event calendar. And then speaking to the recommendation to change the language for any returning impact level three event that is consist, that is requesting a significant event format change, we can certainly make those corrections to the language.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Lisa, are you saying that the Fiesta, AVP, JVCA, AAU, International Surf Festival and Triathlon are collectively forty-five level three event days?
Yeah, it's putting us at forty-three right now.
Those are.
When we're starting to develop the 2023 calendar.
And those are, those are only, are only level three events?
Only level three events if we continue with approving the other recommended policy updates. So the, currently in our 2022 calendar with the policy as is, CBVA and beach tennis are also being categorized as impact level three, but making those adjustments that I suggested to, and the commission is recommending to the impact level characteristic matrix, it would put those as impact level two moving forward.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think the sum total takeaway is that this is, these revisions will allow a significant number of level three events. We're re-categorizing a couple of previously level three events as level one or two. And we're essentially allowing the calendar that we've approved for several years. So it's certainly been us who have populated the calendar as we have. So this is just our opportunity to consider that. Lisa, very quickly, the triathlon, how many days, how many event days is that?
It's one event day and two setup days. So we do count the setup and tear-down days as well as in our, in our limit.
And my, my understanding of the triathlon is that it has been held outside the peak season. Is that right?
Yes, we did ask the triathlon to move outside of the peak season one year. And they found that the event was not as successful and they didn't have as many attendees. So they did return to the peak season the following year.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or a motion for my colleagues?
Happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll move that we waive full reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the City of Hermosa Beach, California, meaning the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Chapter twelve point three zero, Section twelve point three zero, point zero three zero, and finding the same exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the Parks, Recreation and Community Resources Advisory Commission's recommended special event policy guide updates.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to second with a quick comment. I, I want to build on what Commissioner Elman said in acknowledging the staff for excellent work and, and add a big tip of gratitude to all of the commissioners in the Parks and Rec, who I know how carefully and seriously and diligently they, they vet all of the questions and the different sides in these matters. So hats off to the subcommittee and the commission for that. I, I'm also impressed by this. I, I really appreciated the returning events, not having to go through the entire process. Again, I remember observing that, thinking it just seemed very inefficient and not particularly valuable. I would agree that major changes should kick off a review. That said, just to, you know, kind of respond to my colleague, Councilmember Massey, I think I, I'm definitely comfortable with the judgment of, of Lisa Nichols and, and the commission and knowing when and if a minor change is, is not enough to tip that into a whole full review versus significant change, most definitely. That's a judgment call because it's harder to kind of delineate clearly in something like this. And I, I assume, and just wanted to check that that was the purpose of the wording, is to give that wiggle room.
It was, yes.
All right. And with that, I'm happy to second the motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Ramato, second from Councilwoman Campbell. Any deliberation on the motion? Councilor Massey.
Briefly, I can't support the motion simply because I think an addition of fifteen days of level three events in conjunction with re-categorizing what are currently level three events to level one and two is a bit out of balance. And the second is the language at the bottom of page six regarding a significant change to an event. I would change it to, it's presumptive, it's presumed that they will require the whole new application process. the whole new application process because of the significant change to the event unless the Community Resources Director considers or determines it otherwise. As opposed to right now, it's presumed that they don't need to go through the application process again unless the Community Resources Manager decides that it does. So those are the two concerns that I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any thoughts? All right. This public hearing is now closed. Madam City Clerk, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Armatto?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Massey?
No.
Mayor Protem Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor D. Toy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And just another thank you, Director Nichols, and as well as the commissioners. Thank you for all your great work on this and continuing to revisit and hopefully make things better for Hermosa.
Next, we have Item B, Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hermosa Beach, approving the Joint Powers Agreement for Clean Power Alliance of Southern California and authorizing the implementation of a community choice aggregation program.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. I believe Doug will be presenting. Welcome, Mr. Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you, as the city clerk mentioned, is an introduction of an ordinance to approve the JPA between the city and the Clean Power Alliance. Staff is also recommending council authorize the mayor to execute the joint power agreement, and lastly, provide direction on a default energy level for the enrollment of customers. This item is, in some ways, a continuation of what was discussed at the City Council Retreat in November of 2021, at which time council directed staff to explore pursuing a CCA options, which included in January approving funding for a feasibility study with Clean Power Alliance to determine the city's eligibility or fit for the Clean Power Alliance. That feasibility study was completed. The Board of Directors of the Clean Power Alliance approved inviting City of Hermosa Beach to join, and that's what we're here tonight to discuss. I am joined by Ted Bartiky, the Executive Director of Clean Power Alliance, as well as Karen Schmidt with the Clean Power Alliance, and the staff report's pretty comprehensive, look at the past and the present and the future, and we've created a PowerPoint to make this a little more palatable for everyone, so I will work off of that. And we can start that now, so it's up. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So a little background on community choice aggregation in general. This was something approved by the state with Assembly Bill 117 in the year 2002. Community choice aggregation allows jurisdictions to procure their own energy while utilizing the existing infrastructure of the utility companies. It is an opt-in program, meaning that all customers within a jurisdiction are initially enrolled and can then opt out individually. They can opt out completely. They can change their default energy levels. And worth noting is they can opt out even before it starts. They don't have to join and then unjoin. They can opt out prior. Next slide, please. Little background on our emissions goals, which was a big topic of that council retreat in 2021. Statewide emissions reduction goals require cities to implement projects and programs to reduce our carbon emissions, both from municipal operations as well as the community as a whole. And community-wide emissions represent over 95% of total emissions in any jurisdiction. But the city only has control really over its municipal operations. So for instance, in City of Hermosa Beach, we've been working for years to reduce our emissions and improve energy efficiency, you know, from the solar power generation on the community center to electrifying our fleet, to building retrofits, et cetera. So we have targeted our municipal operations, but we have very little control over what the rest of the community does. And when we say the rest of the community, that means every residence, every business, everything else besides municipal facilities. Energy use itself generates approximately 40% of total carbon emissions across both municipal and community operations. So targeting that is key. Next slide, please. CO2 emissions reduction strategies, and for us, including those detailed in Plan Hermosa, recognize the role of community choice aggregation in helping to accomplish these goals. It allows the agencies to immediately increase the amount of renewable energy being used, not only municipally, but community-wide. And for instance, choosing 100% renewable energy level could reduce the city's community-wide CO2 emissions by approximately 40% instantly. Because as I said, if 40% of our emissions is energy, if we could change that, we can make that change immediate. Next slide, please. As has been mentioned, and is pretty well-known, that City of Hermosa Beach has explored CCA options for nearly a decade. The 2021 council retreat was an in-depth discussion of our emissions goals, our reduction goals, some of the measures we've taken to meet those, what we need to do next, and of course, CCA was a big part of that discussion, and Clean Power Alliance was there to present on current status of CCAs in the region and their own program. The city has the option of forming its own CCA or joining an established CCA. Forming its own could potentially produce revenue, but also comes with some financial risks of that. And forming a CCA, of course, also entails significant administrative burden and setup. Next slide, please. Aside from starting our own CCA, which in the staff report is discussed, is not the most desirable option, especially for a city of the size of Hermosa Beach, which is relatively small and it would make it much less viable. To join an established CPA or CCA is another option for us. The Clean Power Alliance is, you know, the biggest and probably the most viable option for an established CCA for the city to join. It serves over 3 million customers throughout LA and Ventura Counties in 32 different communities. It's the fifth-largest electricity provider in California, largest provider of 100% renewable energy in the US, and our neighboring cities of Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach are both already members, as well as obviously another number of communities all throughout LA and Ventura Counties. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned before, as directed at the council retreat, city staff explored the CCA option. Council approved funding for the feasibility study with CPA in January. The study was completed. The Board of the CPA approved inviting Hermosa Beach into the Clean Power Alliance. If council were to approve this, customers would begin receiving energy through CPA in 2024, and the city would get a spot on the CPA's Board of Directors with equal voting rights of any of the other agencies and be able to shape policies and rates and programs accordingly. Next slide, please. Sorry, next slide. Yeah, thank you. Oh, sorry, back one, please. So tonight, one of the recommendations from staff is for the council to select the default energy level if we were to join Clean Power Alliance. CPA offers three rate levels based on the amount of renewable energy. So there's lean power at 40% renewable, which is equivalent to Southern California Edison's base rate. There's clean power, which is 50% renewable energy, and then green power, which is 100%. The default rate can be set separately for commercial and residential customers or together. And upon setting the default rate level, all customers will be enrolled at this level, but as mentioned before, you can opt out altogether, or you can opt to a different default level as an individual customer at any time. Monthly, that is, but any month. You can change every month if you want. So of CPA's 32-member agencies, 20 are currently enrolled at 100% renewable energy across the board. Rates are set to keep parity with Edison. And although fluctuations in the energy market do affect both Edison and CPA's rates. And for example, per CPA's rates set in July of this year, a customer paying $171.20 per month for the Edison base rate would instead pay $177.41 for CPA's 100% renewable rate. So it's about a 3% premium. Next slide, please. CPA offers its member agencies, you know, by being a member and having an equal seat on the board, you have influence of energy efficiency programs, of course, rate setting, and the ability to shape policy in general for the CPA. CPA honors equivalent rates and programs as SCE for low-income and senior customers, and also offers a 10% higher incentive than Edison for solar customers. And if the city were to join CPA, the program, like I said, would go live in 2024, and we would spend 2023 working on outreach to the community and planning the kickoff for 2024. I believe that's my last slide, and with that, I am here for any questions. And as I said, we are joined by members of CPA to help answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus, for that report. I'll look to my colleagues for any questions for staff, or if the director would like to say anything, or I guess he's here for questions as well. Councilor Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, a quick clarifying question. Planning an outreach prior to launch, can you briefly describe that? My understanding is, per the state statute, there's at least two citywide notices that go out that the city will be moving to Clean Power Alliance, letting people know there are options to opt out if they want to stay with Southern California Edison, and so on and so forth. So can you give me a little more detail for the public's benefit?
Right. And I will certainly defer to Ted for some of that, but you're correct about the noticing, and then, of course, internally, as a city, you know, between meetings, social media, everything that we have, you know, all the tools that we have, we would augment that and work with Clean Power to do, you know, community workshops and whatever it takes along our usual methods, as I said, to spend that year making sure everybody knows everything they need to know. And I don't know, Ted, if there is anything additional?
Let me add, can you hear me? Sorry.
No, I don't know. No. You might have to stand at the, yeah.
Oh, okay, that would be helpful. So on the noticing, it is a state law that we actually send out four notices. First notice goes out 60 days before a customer is enrolled in service. Second notice goes out 30 days. So Doug mentioned folks can opt out before. That's the time to opt out before. Another notice goes out 30 days after beginning service. And a fourth notice goes out 60 days. So there are four required notices, two before service and two after service. And we find that most of the customers who do choose to take an action, take an action within those, excuse me, within those 120 days.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Armatto? Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear. Folks can opt out prior to moving to CPA, if that's the direction we go tonight. Residents and businesses, I'm speaking, okay, can, they can opt out after the transition. Up to how many days after the transition can they opt out?
What I understand it, I mean, monthly, you can change your.
You can opt out at any time. Within those, I mentioned those 120 days is the time when most people are taking action, but anyone can opt out at any time. And if you call us to opt out, we will opt you out on the next meter read. So that's the monthly thing. You can't, you don't opt out the next day, but you opt out on your next meter read and go back to Edison service.
Like we all have with our utility bills, like cable jumps up after a year, you call them, you get on a different plan, or you go to a different service provider. So it's crystal clear, you can opt out at any time, not within a particular time period. And then my next question is, depending on if this moves forward and at what rate we would move forward, could someone at any point, or is there a time period, move from green to clean, or clean to lean, or green to lean, if they wanted to stay in CPA but change their rate?
Yes, that can happen on that same monthly cadence. I actually am a secret shopper in my own CCA. I have a CPA account, and every three or four months, I change my rate just to make sure the system's working, and it does work.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Piggyback on that, is there, after that 90 days or 120 days, is there one of the exit fees for a resident that they would opt out of Edison or opt out of CPA and go to Edison?
There are no charges from CPA. At various times, SCE has charged a customer who opts out to opt back in. That charge is currently 50 cents to process the opt-out after the 120-day period. So that's the, but we will never charge a fee.
Mr. Mayor, briefly, just to clarify. So there will be four old-fashioned notices, 60 days before beginning service, 30 days before beginning service, 30 days after beginning service, and 60 days after beginning service. But that's not the only time that you can change your rate tier within CPA, or move back to Edison, or move to Edison. You can do that on a monthly basis.
That's correct.
And then the flip side of that is you can opt in at any time presumably too. So say you opt out of CPA, you opt out to stay with Edison, and then six months after service has begun for the city, you want to join CPA at a particular rate tier, you can opt in. So you can opt in or opt out on a monthly basis. Is that right?
So if you opt out, Edison requires a six-month waiting period for you to opt back in. So we'll take you anytime, but there is a waiting period to opt back in if you were to opt out. We, you know, we do have customers who are coming back. You know, we've been in business now almost five years. We've seen some folks who have opted out, starting to come out, but that's a very deliberate decision, and it does take some time to go through that process of opting back in.
There's a six-month wait period because of Edison's process?
That's correct. Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Campbell. Sorry, my screen is blocking you. I see the finger, though, above my computer screen, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I think there's just a slight delay. Most of my questions have been answered. I just wanted to see if Doug, you, or any of our guests can speak a little bit more about the value of having board representation as a potential benefit to the community or the residents if this council is to join this program.
I'll say a few things and then pass it to you, Ted. I mean, clearly, just being on the board, right? Obviously, with Edison, we have no say in their decisions. And then on top of that, CPA is inherently local, so their programs and policies are going to affect their customers, who are our neighbors and us. So there's kind of a double layer of useful influence there and being able to shape, like I said, the policy, the rates, and the programs. And then to specific programs, I'll pass it off to you, Ted, and if there's anything else you want to add to that.
Doug hit it right on the head. It's policies, it's programs, it's rates. I mean, those are the main things that come before. I mean, those are the main things that come before our board, although, you know, our board is full of other things. So there's a setting of a budget and those sorts of things. But the other thing that that we do at CPA is in our procurement decisions. We'd sign long term power purchase agreements to construct new renewable energy facilities across Southern California mostly. And because our board has directed us to do so, we bring other values into those procurement decisions. We layer on requirements or higher scoring for projects that incorporate workforce development that utilize union labor because we believe in developing middle class jobs. We have high levels of environmental stewardship. So in addition to CEQA and all of those things, we also have a longstanding partnership with the Nature Conservancy that screens the sighting of all of our projects to ensure that not only does the law say, but that a environmental organization with a long track record in understanding needing to fight climate change, but also protecting the environment, screens our projects. If they rank a project low, we don't buy it. So there are other things in terms of the local values that that our board has determined that we want to have in our procurement decisions in addition to some of the more traditional things like price.
Well, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here, sir. Doug, thank you for the presentation. We've had a lot of comments and concerns about sort of worst case scenarios. And we've heard a couple this evening about Marin County and Palm Springs. Can you address sort of the worst case scenarios and costs and liabilities associated?
Sure. So I'm not sure what the reference to Marin, because they're fully operating CCA with a credit rating better than PG&E in their own service territory. So I'm not sure what the Marin reference was. But there the worst case scenario is is a CCA can go bankrupt. And IOU can go bankrupt too. But the, you know, the energy industry is known for its volatility. So that's the worst case scenario. The way you prevent that from happening is number one is you have very, very, very strong risk management policies. So Clean Power Alliance has an energy risk management policy that governs all of our procurement decisions to ensure that we don't get caught by the unexpected. You know, some of the unexpected are the, you know, heat events like we had over the last ten days. We have an extremely good liquidity position. We have over a hundred and thirty million dollars in liquidity. Our cash flow is just fine even after record heat across the the both California and and the Western United States. The other thing that is really important is that we have a board that is committed to a cost of service based rate making approach. So the way we set rates is we need to cover our costs. So every July or every June, the board deliberates on what the rates are in the coming year. We spend a lot of time as staff projecting what our revenue requirement is. And then we present rates that will cover those costs for the coming year. So that's the way you prevent, you know, the worst case is that you have enough revenue in to cover your costs. The deliberations around those rates are pretty substantial. We know we have to cover our costs. And then the question becomes, after you cover your costs, how much are you devoting to reserves and how much are you devoting to programs? And that's like a classic public policy choice in any kind of, you know, entity like this is you got to cover your costs. And then how much more do you put on top of that for reserves? And then how much are you going to spend on programs? In our early years, the board has placed a large premium on hitting reserves, hitting reserve targets. Our minimum target reserves is thirty percent of our annual revenue. And we're looking to have a hundred and twenty days of liquidity on hand at a minimum. We haven't hit that yet, but this year's budget is intended for us to meet those minimum board targets after five, after our fifth year of operations.
So back to sort of the worst case scenario, if there was a bankruptcy involved, let's play that out. What what does that mean for the cities?
So the, as a joint powers authority, our our funds are not commingled with yours. So there's protection. First of all, there's protection against your general fund, which makes it different than a straight up city run CCA. The customers, in the case of a bankruptcy, the customers would undergo what's called an involuntary return to Southern California Edison service or to the service of what is called the provider of last resort. We have a provider of last resort system in in California. In Edison territory, that provider of last resort is Southern California Edison. So customers would see no interruption in their electricity service. And they would be at the end of the the that involuntary transition. There would be a sort of a settling up of what came out of a bankruptcy and what and whether that settling up covered the cost for Edison to serve those customers. So there would be a financial impact to the customer. It's of an unknown amount if we ever went bankrupt.
And that's to the individual customer.
That's to the individual customer. That's correct.
And has that happened, to your knowledge, anywhere within our state?
So one CCA has gone bankrupt. It was Western Community Energy. They didn't make it a year. So they didn't really have a track record. They hadn't built up any reserves. I personally think they had very poor risk management policy. They were trying to run it with consultants. Clean Power Alliance has a staff of sixty, including an entire department just related to risk management on our staff. So, you know, we, we, so it has happened. Additionally, one CCA in Baldwin Park ran its own CCA as a city. And they didn't have an involuntary return, but they deregistered and had a slow transition of returning their customers to Edison. They also didn't last a year. I think the the big risk moments for a CCA are in that startup phase. We've we've passed that and don't see that as a risk in any way.
Thank you, sir. And with regard to participation rates, what's your percentage of participation rates throughout the cities you service?
Yeah, so our our average is just around ninety five percent, which means that ninety five percent of the customers who were enrolled in the the Clean Power Alliance have chosen to stay. We think it's a pretty high value proposition. Those rates are a little bit lower in the in the cities that have defaulted to one hundred percent renewable energy rate and a little bit higher in the in the lower priced tiers. But the difference is actually less than you might expect. The difference is, you know, one and a half or two percent difference between the hundred percent renewable energy default jurisdictions and the the ones on the other two rates. I I tend to, you know, my view of customer behavior and as someone who runs a competitive business where the risk is customer opt outs, we we track this very, very carefully. And tend to believe that people opt out for other reasons other than price. They tend to opt out because of their fear of maybe us going bankrupt someday and they don't want to worry about that. Or they tend to be more skeptical.
I appreciate that. And that's all I have for now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I do have a few more questions. And the staff report says the agency is liable for the cost of every or energy acquired by the CPA on behalf of the customer and his jurisdiction. So you said there's no general fund liability on the city, but that staff report, I was a little confused on on that sentence.
Let's see. Hey, there we go. Right in the in the thick of it, yeah. So that is the provision that if the city were to leave the JPA. So when the city joins the JPA, we now, as an organization, become responsible for acquiring energy on behalf of all of the residents and businesses in your jurisdiction. That's costs we will start to incur as soon as the CPUC approves our our filing. So even before we start serving customers, we're going to go out and we're going to start acquiring energy on on behalf of the residents and and businesses of Hermosa Beach, if if that's what you, you know, if you decide to join. Subsequently, if you were to decide to leave the JPA, we would have costs that we would have incurred, you know, over a year or two or five years. That if you, if all of the customers left Clean Power Alliance service because of your decision to leave, then we would have stranded costs that stay with our current customers, all the customers who were who were who were there. And that's when we would have to, that that's the risk to the city. The city would have to reimburse us for deciding to leave the JPA and the above market costs or the costs of that energy we had required forward. I'm seeing some a skeptical look, and so maybe I didn't explain that right.
No, I mean, so if you do exit, there would be a general fund liability on the city.
If the if the city then decided to leave the JPA, there's not, but there's not a general fund liability if we were to cease to exist or if an individual customer decides to leave. It's only a withdrawal from the JPA where there's a financial risk or impact to the city.
There was some public commenters earlier about the financials and bond ratings and things. Do you have, I saw on the website that during your, on the financial subcommittee or whatever, they did have the latest revenues for the year. Do you or do you have a public bond rating or?
Yeah, so we do not, we don't have a credit rating yet. It's a goal in in the, you know, in the next twelve to eighteen months. Most of the large CCAs that are a little bit older than us do have investment grade credit ratings. The the budget and the rates this year are designed to meet those board approved reserve and days liquidity on hand targets, which are aligned with what the rating agencies are looking for in in providing an investment grade credit rating. So we've met most of the targets for an investment grade credit rating. The one that we don't that we don't currently meet and we need to bolster is the days of liquidity on hand, which is a combination of cash on hand and available line of credit. We do have an eighty million dollar line of credit with JP Morgan. And that, you know, cushions us from, you know, big heat events like we just had earlier this month.
So with the thirty percent reserves, what's your goal, hopefully, for a credit rating?
Well, it's never good to go out the gate with a credit rating that's only one, the the minimum one in the investment grade. So the goal, you know, in in a S and P rating would be a single A.
And then there was notes in the executive report that it looks like in twenty twenty four, the CPA revenue prior to expansion, including Hermosa Beach, if I'm reading this right, would be a point zero nine percent loss, point zero eight percent loss.
Yeah, so this was a, I think, a really, sort of was an interesting discussion at the board because we are inviting three cities to join us this year, Hermosa Beach, Monrovia and Santa Paula out in Ventura County. And collectively, there we showed that because of elevated power prices currently to serve the customers across those three cities would be a a small financial detriment to the the organization. The costs at the rates that we hope to charge would be, you know, there would be a deficit. But it's small. It worked out to about seventeen cents a month per customer of Clean Power Alliance that would make up that that deficit. You know, we're very large and the three cities that are looking to join are are not as large as our overall portfolio. So it was about fifteen to seventeen cents per residential customer. The board felt that the mission of the organization should be to provide more choice to more customers across Southern California and high, you know, more rapid reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So it felt as though the mission of the organization was served by, you know, the likely need to charge each customer a little bit more in twenty twenty four to bring those three new cities on.
All right, got a couple more. State law twenty thirty, sixty percent of energy production needs to be renewable. Is that correct?
That's that's correct.
Okay, and then forty five is a hundred percent.
That's right. So new new state law SB ten twenty, sixty percent by twenty thirty, ninety percent by twenty thirty five, ninety five percent by twenty forty, a hundred percent by twenty forty five. We will hit the sixty percent that that twenty thirty goal on an overall portfolio base in either twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. We're going to beat that by a significant amount. And that is frankly due to the choices of the communities and the customers to be on that hundred percent renewable rate.
So come twenty forty five, what is, what do CCAs look like if Edison already has to?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So so when we're all at at twenty forty five, I mean, when we're all at a hundred percent, you know, we're competing on price. We're competing on programs. We're competing on customer service. We're doing the sort of the same thing that, you know, any any competitive business is is doing. You know, you're talking about price and service and programs.
The rest of my questions. Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is probably for city staff. So Madam City Manager, I'm understanding that there will be financial burdens associated with the formation of a CCA in that we'd have staff that we would be required to oversee these operations and to interface between council and CCA. What sort of additional specialized staffing do you envision needing?
At this time, I don't envision requiring any additional staff. I think when we've looked at this previously, we've assessed that it can be managed internally with the resources we have.
My clarification, you referring to joining CPA or to starting our own CCA?
Ah, that was right. No, that was my mistake. That's correct. That's correct. No, you're right, right, right. Yes, thank you for that clarification. My oversight. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ted or Doug or any other staff? Mary? You good? All right. Mayor Portem?
All right. I think now is the time. Madam City Clerk, could you please queue up a comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I apologize. I just wanted to remind you, the council and members of the public of the city council's policy of only allowing one speaker to comment on on an item once. Um, I had had marked down six previous public commenters that have already commented. Madam City Clerk, if you have that, I can read that to confirm that you agree, or if I missed any, you can correct me. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Sounds great.
Got it. So I I have the commentators who have already spoken as Mr. Dean Francois, Ms. Carolyn Petty, Mr. Kent Allen, Mr. Matt McCool, Mr. Dan Goodwin, and then I apologize, it was the the phone speaker who had played the the video, I believe, for first Tracy Hopkins, Ms. Tracy Hopkins. And Madam City Clerk, if I missed any, let me know. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
This is a time for general for public comment on this item only, which is a Clean Power Alliance item. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and if you are joining the meeting by phone, please remember to dial star six to unmute yourself and star nine to raise your hand. Participants joining by internet, please remember to unmute yourself and please say your name for the record. We did receive various public speaker cards. Um, speaker cards from the very first person that we have. We have JR Ravinsky and JR. You can come up now.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. This was a uh not an easy read. There's a lot of information here and a lot to digest. And uh, I've got I haven't got more questions than I've got time to give them. So uh, I guess uh I can I can start out with uh number one. Is Edison working on parallel lines as this CCA? And if they are, why are we doing this? Okay, that's the first question. I don't know. Secondly, the additional cost uh to the residents that uh Councilman Mavs, he said there would be none on page four. It clearly says it'll be three to 4% more for our residents to use this. Uh, so I guess he was in error. Probably the first time. Uh, I also wanted to talk about the uh postponement of making this decision. I don't know why it needs to be made right now. There could be a new council here in a few weeks and uh I, being in your shoes, have have done just uh just that, not not uh looked at a matter because we got some new people coming in and we thought that they got to live with it. So why are we making a decision that they got to live with? So I would uh, I would hope you might we might consider that. And uh you know, I didn't get all the way through all your information on this article. I mean, I got the supplements. You had 12 of them. Between item one and two, there were 113 pages. So I didn't have, I don't know what the rest of them is. I apologize. I didn't get through all of maybe they answered some of my questions, but uh maybe we could get these things out a lot earlier. We got some more time to read the things when we have an issue like this, because there was a lot of information here. And thank you very much.
The next speaker card is from Gary Brown.
Good evening. Food for thought. Figures don't lie, but liars figure. Just something to throw out. I too am concerned with the fact that we have had so many five zero four one votes. We have two council members that are leaving. And I echo what JR said. It's not really, it seems unseemly to make a vote on something this important. And we've been working on this for years. This is not something that just came up. Mr. Mass has been involved in this. He's a, you know, he's a definitely a a green guy, that's for sure. So he's been in favor of this for a long time, but we hasn't gone through. My other concern is on the board. Is there is this a paid position on the board? You're going to be a member of the board? Seems to me we ought to know whether it's a paid position or not. The other thing is that uh the plans that they offer are the same plans that Edison offers right now. There is no difference. There's not a dime's bit of difference in any of these things. Why would I want to risk my money? I don't gamble in Las Vegas anymore. Why would I want to do that? When we have Edison, who we're not worried about them going into bankruptcy. We're not worrying about them having fees or costs. It's ridiculous to even consider that. The same fees, they're not giving us a deal. They can't give us a better deal than Edison already has. So I don't think I don't think it's worth our time to do that. The other thing is that it's just in general. Our grid, we have bigger problems. We have bigger fish to fry than this. Our grid is going to take another $350 billion to even bring it up to snuff. If everybody has a car, a Tesla electric car, you're going to have to have these filling stations that used to used to give gasoline. You're going to have people waiting in line. I don't know where you're going. I don't know how you're going to fill them up. It's going to take you 30 to 40 minutes to fill up your car. You can't go into the gas station and be there for 30 to 40 minutes, filling up your car. Look, this is technology that it will come in existence at some point in time, maybe. But there are a lot of things that we have to consider. So we're always putting the the cart before the horse. And the other thing we do here in the council is that we study things to death. We pay for everything. We pay for somebody to do here. This is this is like, this is not rocket science. Use your common sense. My common sense tells me this is a bad deal. All right. I can go to Edison right now and get the same thing. I don't have to worry about opting in and opting out. And believe me, if this thing does pass, I'm opting out. Thank you.
Next, we have Rob Seaman.
Good evening, Mayor DeToye and Mayor Protem Jackson and all council members. Welcome. Uh, um, most of you know me. Uh, all of you know me here and most people out there that are watching uh don't know me. And for their sake, I would like to tell you that my name is Rob Seaman. I am a 48-year resident and I have served the city for almost 10 years as a planning commissioner and a public works commissioner. And I am currently a candidate for city council. I um didn't come here tonight to debate the pros and cons of a CCA. Um, I um, I really came here to say that this issue has been here for many years, as you all know. And my real question is, why now? This election cycle will bring us a new city council. There's going to be at least two new members, we know, and uh that will bring a new mix to city council uh with new ideas, new points of view. And it it seems important that that new city council should decide this controversial and impactful issue. Uh, as it has been said here recently uh by uh JR Viski. Why do this now? And then the new city council is going to have to deal with this afterward. Um, I I would like to say that we I would like to ask that we postpone this again and let the residents speak their minds with their votes on November 8. Let's leave the future of Hermosa Beach to the future city council. Thank you.
Next, we have George Bars.
Good evening, uh Mayor DeToye, members of the city council, city staff, and the residents uh watching the council meeting tonight. Uh, I'm George Bars, a 53-year resident of Hermosa Beach. Uh, born and raised here. Uh, and now 27 years in Redondo Beach on and off. I'm a businessman in Hermosa, a businessman in Redondo Beach. And I'm a candidate for Assembly District 66. So if the residents want change in Sacramento, they want better representation, vote for George Bars. With regards to this CCA, I would personally be a little more cautious and take a little more time, but I do support cleaner energy. And I know the city's been working on this for 10 plus years or at least 10 years. And uh and that's a a good goal to have, but as the other speakers said, uh, there is a little bit of a risk here. And I'd like to know of the 32 cities, how many counties and how many cities uh do we have in those counties? And uh also, uh, it's my understanding, Southern California Edison would be doing the billing. Obviously, they're going to be doing the maintenance on the power lines. Um, and obviously, some of these uh cities have gone bankrupt with this program. And um so I would just be a little more cautious and as it as it was said, that uh you're going to have two new council members. And um uh I think that caution will be the best course to take. We're a very small city here. Now, I'm currently a resident of Redondo Beach, and as you know, Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach you're very enrolled in this program. And my bill hasn't changed, by the way, but I don't know if this is a effective yet, because in listening to the, you know, to the staff here, 2024 would be when it would be effective in Hermosa Beach. So I don't know. Uh, I, my bill hasn't gone up. I know that. And um so you're doing a good job in really uh asking tough questions and really uh um you know, this is not, it's complex, right? So listen, nobody from Hermosa Beach has ever gone higher than a city council to uh represent Hermosa in this district. So think about voting for George Bars for Assembly District 66. Thank you.
Next, we have Trent Larson.
Hello, city council. Okay. Um, I'm going to take this from a high level down rather than argue the minutia. The CCA still to this, to my knowledge, has not presented a value add proposition at all. The state of California took their stuff right out from under them when they mandated all of these green energy requirements that we have to have. So the state did that. So now we have the CCA coming in as consultants and buyers to give us what the state's already mandating. And we're supposed to think that this is like really new and great and and great stuff, when really, as I see it, the CCA hasn't produced anything except votes on city council. And what I see the CCA being is really a revenue play for the city. So you have captured customers, right? You talks about any business going after this. The businesses don't have captured customers. Regulated utilities have captured customers. Okay, so you have captured customers. You have it set to where you have one regulated utility Edison versus another semi-regulated utility CCA, and they're going to ping pong each off each other and rates are going to go up because whatever they do to cut the cost, Edison's going to cry foul and they're both going to raise their rates. It's as old as time. It's like good cop, bad cop. It is. It's so easy for somebody like me to see that I just it's like we're being hoodwinked here. And they're not adding value. So if they were out there buying land and producing power and putting in all this infrastructure and doing all this stuff and then selling us the energy, you could say, well, they're a power company. They're making the stuff. They're a power company, but that's not what's happening, and you know that. So and you guys, none of you and or me or anybody in this room, maybe Suja, I would say, could do it, should be on the board of any power company. You don't have the knowledge. You don't have the experience. You you also have political motivations to mess with electricity. And that's another thing going wrong with California. We have political motivations over electricity. That's not working over the long run for us. We're not making enough juice. And they're talking about, you know, when the when we need a lot of energy, God, we get hosed because our price goes up and they have to have 30% reserves. You don't hoard money. It attracts thieves. Hoarding money attracts thieves. And I wouldn't trust them with all that money. 30% reserves? That's a lot of money. That money should be put to work building nuclear power plants in the state for crying out loud so that we can have renewable energy forever. So that's it. Nathan. Okay.
Next, we have Jeff Rady.
Good evening, Jeff Rady, uh, 8th Street. Uh, community choice taken at face value. Uh, what's not to like? You know, pay a little bit more uh for your energy, but do your part uh to contribute to uh the environment and renewable energy. Where I have trouble is trying to reconcile two messages I'm getting from city council and staff. On July 26, we listened to the city manager talk for 20 minutes about all of the underfunded programs and deferred projects we have in the city. And consequently, the city council unanimously approved a measure uh on the ballot to uh hike our sales tax by to the tune of $3 million a year. Just two months and two days later, the same city council and staff are telling us that it's a good idea to saddle our residents with untold potentially millions of dollars in future budgets that will have to be earmarked for green energy projects and risk and potentially carbon offsets. The city council is signing a blank check that future councils, which I hope to be on, will have to fund through even more deferrals and regretful cuts to necessary projects and services. There's lots of talk about opting out, but citizens can't opt out of those budgets and risks. And ultimately, those budgets and risks will be passed on to the members of the community. That's not fiscal responsibility and it's not transparency. I cannot support this measure because it invokes too much budget uncertainty and risk for what will likely be a marginal improvement over what the state is already mandating and is already available through investor-owned uh utilities. I hope this is not a fait accompli and that you reconsider support for this agreement. Thank you.
No other public uh speaker cards were provided for this item? If we have any other in-person comment, now is the time.
David Grayson, Hermosa Beach. Um, I started off looking at this uh through the eyes of a public works commissioner, viewing this as kind of an extension of our infrastructure and realizing that we need to meet our goals for carbon uh emission reductions. Um, but I also look at this, you know, for everyone in the city and what it could mean to all of us. Um, the one thing I'm I'm going to talk about is um if we go forward with this, someone will be on that board. And I really hope that they will be in a position to help um understand the the interests of the the people who participate from Hermosa Beach. And um, so maybe there will be some support needed there uh in in that regard. One of the risks that occurred to me is i- if there are a lot of member cities in this in CPA and we'll want to keep an eye out and understand these policies and especially the programs as they evolve. Um, we haven't heard much about the programs. And so I think if we go forward, just that's something that we are going to be hearing more about. Because what happens is the policies and the associated programs will then affect how the resources get allocated within the CCA. will then affect how the resources get allocated within the C C A. And then that'll affect the rates. And so because there are so many member cities, some are going to be well aligned with our cities' preferences and objectives, and some are not. So I really hope that whoever gets appointed in that role really takes the job seriously and is a way to look out for us. And also then, as far as how that translates into a vote that would be meaningful. In the staff report, I appreciate Doug talked about the two types of voting. So far, it looks like most or all of the votes have been on where it's a one-city-one vote, which is kind of encouraging. We'll see what happens if that starts to go in a direction where our roughly zero point seven weighted vote doesn't carry much weight later on. So so that's just, you know, I'm looking ahead a little bit as to what's going to happen. And the reason that some of these programs could diverge is, you know, and also point out that among the policies that could drive the programs, there are environmental justice goals that C P A has. And so people may be all good with that, some won't. And then as far as the programs, I'll just mention that the other programs are a little more technical in nature. So-called demand response, things about if you want to allow them to control your thermostat, how you charge your vehicle, how you manage the solar array and batteries that you may have. Technically, I think a lot of it is actually good to help us efficiently manage resources. And I just hope that if C P A does that, they do it in a way that people still have a choice to not be controlled if they don't want to. But then it all comes back to Councilmember Armando's point is this is an opt-out. And so just like it's an opt-out altogether, people would also be able to opt out of those programs. So the reason I went into it a little bit is because I haven't heard a lot about the programs.
Three minutes up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other in-person public comment at this time for this item? Seeing none. We do have Christian. Christian, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Hi, good evening. Am I being heard? I can't tell, but this is Christian Horbath, City of Redondo Beach, Councilmember, and also Director on the Clean Power Alliance Board. First of all, I just want to say congratulations for getting back to this place. Hermosa has always been a leader as it relates to environmental issues. And you were an early leader in bringing the topic of community choice accreditation to the South Bay. And so I was disappointed that it didn't happen some years ago, but I'm glad to see you back here. And I did make the motion at our recent board meeting to to bring Hermosa and the other two cities along. With that said, I think you've all asked some really good questions tonight. You're being judicious. I think there's been some comments made from the public that are understandable. But I think there are plenty of ways to show them that their reasons or concerns are unfounded. And at the end of the day, going back to the simple point, this is all about choice. You don't have a choice with your current I O U. Any revenues that are made, they go back to the shareholders. Clean Power Alliance is all about coming back to the customers. And so while we have been a judicious board and we have ensured that we can promote the fiscal responsibility of the organization to the benefit of the organization and the member cities. Clean Power Alliance's goals and policies that have been set forth and that we are working towards are going to be to the benefit of each of the member cities down the line. So I would highly recommend that you move forward tonight and that you join Clean Power Alliance. I think it's in your best interest, along with Redondo, Manhattan, and many of your sister cities. And I'd be happy to take any questions from the position of a board member if you have them. Thank you all.
Next, we have Ken Allen. I just want to double check. Ken Allen did speak on the C C A earlier during general public comment. So we will move over to we do have a nine one six phone number, and your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Good evening, Council. This is Raymond DeSault, Eighteenth Court in Hermosa Beach. Thank you for giving me time to speak. I'm going to say right from the outset that I am not an expert on C C As so that Justin doesn't mock me later. I'm mainly calling in because, like so many others, I've pointed out how since two thousand fifteen, the council has brought this issue up many times. From my memory, every single time it's been brought up, the community has spoken out against making this big decision. Like many others, I also have to point out that two council members won't even be here in a couple of months. That's not a negative thing. It just tells you that this is the wrong time to make a momentous decision that will be a burden on our community for decades to come. It's not the right time to do this. It would be one thing if it if community choice actually meant choice. Mr. Hovart said it's all about choice. But when you say we're going to opt you in and you can ask us to get out, it's not about choice. In fact, you know what the choices people would make. That's the purpose of forcing the opt-in. So it's kind of Orwellian to call it all about choice. I'm not going to take a position on whether this is a good decision or not or a bad decision as far as the C C A goes, because I'm not knowledgeable enough at this point, partially because this thing has been kicked down the road so many times after massive community opposition that I honestly thought it was gone. And so and most of the community thought it was gone. You talk to anybody in the community that's not in your little bubble, and they're going to tell you, we didn't see this coming. I'd really appreciate it if you guys would just one time not have your decision pre-made before you stepped into the council chambers and actually respect the community's voice and say, you know what? We'll let the next council handle this item for the community. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Next, we have Laura Peña.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, this is Laura Peña. I want to thank the mayor, mayor pro tem, council members and staff for the opportunity to provide feedback. I also want to thank all the community members who submitted written public comment and spoke this evening. As has been mentioned, it was considerable information to digest, understand, and provide thoughtful questions. As the letter from the Clean Power Alliance states, to move forward, the city needs to adopt an ordinance by November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Since the election, which is within forty days, and considering allowing our community to have more input and thus have a stronger voice in this long-lasting decision for Hermosa, I recommend rescheduling this item until after the election. Now, if the current council thinks they have an accurate pulse from our community regarding this decision, I would ask you to consider the following items. One, the J P A board level sets the rates and the procurement decisions. Where are their oversight mechanisms in regards to these positions since they are not directly elected into these seats? Two, as I understand, if this is adopted, all residents and businesses will be automatically enrolled in the C C A. And if you want to opt out, you'll have the opportunities, the last being sixty days after service starts. Now, in doing so, you'll have to pay the exit P C I A fee, which last year was unusually higher than normal, as stated by the C E O at last year's retreat. And it fluctuates year to year. Now, did I hear correctly? It was only fifty cents? Now, as I understand, the P C A costs will go down over time. But what about the legacy costs? Have we have we discussed those? We need more fiscal accountability questions to be asked. The fact that there is no rating yet is very concerning. Why not wait until there is a rating? Now, there are three different price points, as I understand. Why don't we start? If you guys are going to do this, we start with the lean first to get our residents and businesses accustomed to this switch. It's called start making your community better. Why not start there if you guys agree to this? And then finally, since the Board of Directors consider rate changes once a year based on cost service principles, what kind of impact will the water drought have on our rates? And from what I understand, these green options aren't always the greenest. If there's cheaper land far away, they can build there and then build up infrastructure to transport that energy to our town. That extra infrastructure can ultimately increase our energy's carbon footprint. In regards to power procurement, how many projects are located within California, since it's the preference of the C P A? The bottom line, we need more community input on this long-term decision that will impact all of our energy costs. Please note, I'm not necessarily against joining the C P A. But with all due respect to current council members, I recommend you delay the vote since you have the time according to C P A. Again, it's not due until November thirtieth. Thank you again for your careful consideration.
Next, we have Craig. Craig, your three minutes will begin after you're unmuted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and Staff. My name is Craig Hadwalder, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation South Bay Chapter. And I strongly urge going forward with joining the C P A and also joining at the hundred percent green power level. Our members are very concerned about sea level rise and coastal erosion that has come with climate change. And we know that the greenhouse gases from fossil fuel-based power generations are a huge contributor to that. And the sooner the switch is made to clean power, the sooner we can try to damp down on the negative impacts of climate change. The fact that the surrounding cities have gone to one hundred percent, in fact, twenty-one rather than twenty, of the thirty-two members are planning for one hundred percent green power. And these cities that have joined the C P A, some have been in there for a while. The County Unincorporated, both for Los Angeles and Ventura, have signed up for that. And it is the smart thing to do. And it's the C P A has shown that they are viable. They've been around for a number of years now. And this is a critical decision to make. The sooner the better. I actually was on the Advisory Council for South Bay Clean Power that started this whole process that the county took over. And it was a smart thing to do then, and it's even more critical now. We are very aware with the temperatures we've had recently, the drought. All these things are a product of climate change. And the sooner we can make the change everywhere to one hundred percent green power, the better. So I strongly urge you to join the C P A and join at the hundred percent green power level. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Dancy Nelson, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Dancy Nelson, twenty-four fifteen Silver Strand Avenue, Hermosa Beach, forty-year homeowner here. While this was a long time coming, has been said by many tonight. Yes, Hermosa Beach was the leader in this. The first meetings in those chambers were in two thousand fourteen. And it was really motivated by our then-city manager, Tom Backley, because the directive that came from the city to reach certain carbon reduction goals. And what was recognized by the city manager and staff was that the greatest impact on reducing those carbon reductions or carbon reduction was to adopt a C C A. Now, it's ironic that as the opportunity came up in two thousand seventeen, our neighboring cities, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, both went for it, and we were left as a donut hole. That is primarily because in late two thousand seventeen with deadlines, we were very, very involved with our community development plan at the time. And that was the priority before the deadline reached, which was, I believe, December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. So it's been out there for us, as has been discussed. It's never gone away. It's always been the right thing to do. And what I will say to those who have said, well, Edison's pretty much there. Why do we need this thing? Well, I happened to be in the Manhattan Beach chambers when they deliberated this. And they successfully decided to go with then what was the became the Clean Power Alliance. And let me step back. It is also a good thing that we did delay it some because there were several options that were being considered at the time. Several C C As were not nearly as good as what the C P A is now. The C P A is now time-tested, successful, thirty-two cities. And as I said, in two thousand seventeen, when Manhattan Beach deliberated this, there were a couple on that council who said, let's start at the lower level. And in deliberation was brought to their attention, that doesn't put any pressure on Edison to do better. This is a free market. When you have competition, you incentivize, you force the others to do better. And that's what motivated that council to set the default at a higher level. And within two years, even though at the time they just went to the fifty percent, there was such an out, more residents signed up voluntarily for a hundred percent in Manhattan Beach than any city in the alliance. And within two years, they went to a hundred percent. And as been stated, ninety-five percent is the average of customers in all of these cities that have gone to Clean Power Alliance have stayed with it. And we will provide competition with what right now is a monopoly of Edison providing energy for us. We will get better services. We will have competitive prices. We'll have reach our reduction of carbon emission sooner by going with the C P A. Thank you very much for this time.
I do not see any other virtual hands raised. I'll wait. Moira Nelson, your three minutes will begin once you're unmuted.
Hi, this is Moira. Let's see. Okay, this is Moira Nelson. And I didn't mean to go right after Dancy, but it seems as if nobody else is in line to speak. And I did want to. I live in Hermosa Beach on Silver Strand Avenue. I'm very fortunate in that we have had solar panels on our roof for two decades, meaning for more than two decades, meaning our entire electrical needs have been supplied by the sun consistently. We've been returning excess power to the grid. We, at the same time, have powered our cars with clean energy. And we now have storage batteries. So when there's a power outage, we immediately switch to the storage batteries and our lights don't go out. So we simply know that solar power is extremely dependable. And it also, in my experience, is that most people now understand the need to switch to solar power and clean energy, but that most of them maybe feel they can't afford the upfront costs or are simply intimidated by taking about taking the individual responsibility to do that. It's a big left. And I think it's entirely appropriate and necessary for the city to provide a bridge that helps us all transition to clean energy. It's something that's not happening fast enough. We are, it's, it gets kind of more obvious and more serious every year that we have to be moving this along with some determination without recklessness. We have to push it along and stop kicking it down the road. So thank you very much. I'm too nervous to tweet it.
Next, we have Robert Fortunato. Your three minutes will begin once you're muted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. Thank you for bringing this back. We started this conversation. We started this conversation eight years ago. And the idea was to really get some competition for Southern California Edison. Because we felt that we could do better, and we still feel that way. That is that we could lower the carbon footprint of the city significantly. And that's not just an abstract thing. We have significant threats to our health, both in the south and in the north. We have power plants that are spewing toxic fumes on us on a daily basis. And, and we have a refinery as well. And this sends a clear message that we are not going to buy that power from those refineries because they are burning fossil fuels. They cause heart disease, lung disease, and cancer, and asthma problems for our residents here in Hermosa Beach. So this is not an abstract thing at all. We have the opportunity to do better, and very specifically with this measure. There's a number of questions that were raised about this, and you know, somebody brought up that it's more expensive. It's only more, more expensive if you go with 100% option. And we all know that solar and wind are less expensive than, than coal or gas at this point. Five additional power plants were proposed for the Los Angeles area, and all of them were scrapped because solar paired with batteries are less expensive to build, and they're less expensive to maintain. We also know that there's a significant water load that is necessary for the cooling of those gas-fired power plants, which means that the water and energy nexus is very high with fossil fuels. It doesn't exist with solar panels. We're currently in a very, very severe drought. And so this measure prioritizes the kind of energy that we actually need to produce for both our health and for our welfare, given the severe drought. So this is not something that we can push down the road anymore. We had an opportunity to do this a while ago. And we passed on it, and as a result of that, we missed the opportunity for four full years. I'm trained as an economist, and this is about, this is about having the market speak here, and competition is good. And we have the opportunity to do something really generative by, by moving forward with the Clean Power Alliance. And I would just really wholeheartedly support this measure, and if there's anything else that we can do to help you with this going forward, we're happy to do it, but there's a whole army of supporters that know this needs to happen, and we encourage you to do it tonight. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I do not see any other virtual hands raised.
Thank you for that. Do one final call for public comment. If you're joining us in here and you have not spoken on this item, go ahead and approach the dais. If you're joining us virtually, you can raise a virtual hand, or if you're joining us by telephone, you can dial star nine to raise a virtual hand.
We do have Donna Bell. Donna, your three minutes will begin once you are unmuted.
Actually, it's, it's John Bell, her husband. We've listened to a lot of pros and cons to this CCA situation. And again, we're all in favor of cleaner air. I think there's no question there. As far as reducing Hermosa Beach's carbon footprint by joining CCA, I don't see how that's possible since there are no power plants in Hermosa Beach that we could take offline. And as far as joining a CCA at a higher cost, the goal would be, once again, cleaner air. We all agree with that. Since 2002, in the inception of CCA, it's not one single fossil fuel power plant has come offline. Not because of the CCA. The ones that have come offline have come offline because they're not economically viable any longer because of old technologies. So my question would be this. If Hermosa Beach enters into an agreement with CCA at a higher cost, how many power plants will be taken offline? If none will be taken offline, then we're going to get no return on our investment. There'll be no improvement in, in the quality of our, our air quality. So, you know, that, those are the questions that, that I have. The other part of it is, we talk renewable, but there's been no definition of renewable that I have heard. And I asked that question because previously when we investigated, as part of the power that we were going to get through Lancaster was coming from renewable resources, boilers in Oregon that are burning wood that the paper mills can't use to make paper with. So the fuel is renewable, it met that definition. But the power plant is still spewing out pollutants. So we need a definition of what renewable actually means. At any rate, I would recommend highly that we put this off. Further investigation needs to go into this, and has been pointed out. California has already mandated that the power providers meet certain standards. So that competitiveness that we would impose doesn't exist. There's no value in that statement at all. It makes sense to continue doing what we're doing. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
One last look around the room. One last call in the virtual world. Raise your virtual hands or dial star nine. There's one public commenter, his hand up, who spoke earlier. So with that, I will close public comments. It's my colleagues for any questions. I know I have some from count, or from public commenters, but I'll let Councilor Massey kick it off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And during the course of my comments, Ted, if you want to interrupt me or correct anything I say, please come on up, Doug, same thing. It's not even a close question whether to join Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach at 100% renewable as part of the Clean Power Alliance. Some of the questions are understandable, but lots of them have been answered many times over many years. And others are just far-fetched what ifs. And the comments reflect a great deal of misinformation and even irony. And the irony in particular is the folks who say, oh, well, we shouldn't decide this now because we haven't talked about it enough. And then a second later, they say, we've been talking about this for years. We have been talking about this for quite a while. We have kicked the tires on this proposal. We have seen CCAs grow and operate successfully. We have seen the Clean Power Alliance in particular grow and operate successfully. And our neighbors to the north and south enjoy the service CPA provides. So it is not even a closed question. Let me talk about three basic categories that I think are important for people to understand about the benefits of joining CPA. And then I want to go through some of the comments we've heard and respond to them. The first is choice. This is community choice aggregation. And ultimately, if we would join it 100% and you stay at 100%, you pay more, but you get more, you get cleaner power. And a lot of people are going to opt to stay in that tier. If you want to pay less and get more, you can do that. All you have to do is opt for the lowest renewable tier for Clean Power Alliance, and you'll be paying less than you're paying now with Edison. So you can pay less and get more, or you can pay more and get more, your choice. You could even stay with Edison. If you really love for-profit utilities, and you really don't like competition in the marketplace, and you really think you're getting the best price from Edison and the best service, stay with Edison. If you choose to go with the Clean Power Alliance, choose whatever rate tier floats your boat. If you want to save a few bucks, by all means, go with the lowest rate tier. You'll be getting more clean power than Edison provides you and paying less than Edison's charging you. If you want to go to 50%, you'll pay the same amount of money that Edison is charging you for dirtier power. And like I said, if you want to pay more, if you want to go to 100% and stay there, you can. And it'll cost you probably what a cup of coffee at Starbucks costs you every month. I think the planet's worth it, but that's a decision everybody's going to make because everybody has a choice to make of their own. The second category I want to talk about is security. And this one is riddled with misinformation, including from our former council member. Let's be crystal clear. A joint powers authority insulates the city treasury. There is no recourse to the city treasury. So in the very unlikely event that the Clean Power Alliance backed by the county and 32 of our fellow cities in Los Angeles County somehow bungles it and goes bankrupt, which, by the way, Pacific Gas and Electric went bankrupt a couple of years ago. So it's not unheard of in the for-profit space. But in the very unlikely event that that happens, there is no recourse to the Hermosa Beach Treasury. There's no recourse to any of the member agencies. Joint Powers Authorities are used to operate everything from water systems and wastewater systems to airports all over the state. And they're set up specifically to insulate the member agencies. So any of the talk and commentary about liability to the city shows a fundamental misunderstanding of what a joint powers authority is. And I'll even add that some cities run their utilities with enterprise funds. They're not even joint powers authorities. They're within the city. Even an enterprise fund does not have recourse to the city treasury. Let's talk about the track record of CCAs. In the far-fetched what ifs and talks about, oh, what could happen, what could be the worst case scenario? We heard of one involuntary dissolution by a mismanaged small CCA somewhere out in Riverside. And we heard of one voluntary dissolution. There are 24 CCAs operating successfully in California, serving 11 million California residents. One in four California residents is getting its power from the CCA. I challenge anybody to find a better track record than that. It's certainly better than your three for-profit utilities, San Diego Gas and Electric, Edison, and PG&E, one of which just went bankrupt, the other two of which have skirted bankruptcy because they keep starting wildfires and they run to the Public Utilities Commission to raise their rates. So that brings me to the third category I want to talk about. The environmental and economic impacts of climate change and why it's incumbent upon a city like ours to be part of the solution. Sea level rise. A couple of years ago, the US Geological Survey came to Hermosa Beach and gave us a virtual reality presentation called Look Ahead, where we could see what sea level rise looks like. The ocean's going to be lapping up on the strand in a few decades when our kids hopefully are living here. So think about that. We are on the front lines of the impacts of climate change. You didn't have to read many papers this summer to hear about how Greenland is melting and Antarctica is melting. We've got aridification. We're in the midst of a mega drought, 20 years. The Colorado River is about to be a dead pool. We're not going to be able to pass any water through Hoover Dam. We've got wildfires, mega wildfires, every summer devastating communities costing the state billions of dollars. We've got hurricanes from Houston to Florida and everywhere in between. It's costing us massive amounts of money. And you know how that's affecting all of our pocketbooks here in Hermosa Beach and in California? We pay to respond to those wildfires. We pay more in our electric bills because the for-profit utilities have been able to raise their rates to cover their potential liability for starting these massive wildfires. We pay more in insurance because we have to ensure people who live in wildfire-prone areas. And we're going to have to pay massive amounts of money for water infrastructure because the Southwest is drying out as a result of climate change. As a result of the burning of fossil fuels, which joining Clean Power Alliance at 100% renewable energy helps make us part of the solution to that problem. So let me talk about some of the comments that we heard over the course of the night. There's liability to the city. No, there isn't. That's what a joint powers authority does, and that's what Clean Power Alliance is. There's inflexibility. No, there's not. You could stay with Edison. Or you have another choice with three different rate tiers to choose from. And by the way, you can't get into Edison's 100% renewable rate tier right now because it's over prescribed. So this provides you a choice that you don't currently have. Increased cost. No. No. JR, if you want to stay with Edison, you stay with Edison. You pay the same exact amount you're paying right now. If you want to go to CPA at 40% renewable, which is cleaner energy than you're getting from medicine, you're going to pay less. If you want to bump up, you can. There's no increased cost unless you choose it. You do get automatically opted in to whatever rate tier we would set, but you absolutely will have multiple opportunities and have a constant monthly opportunity to switch your rate tier, switch back to Edison. There was another comment along those lines that this will increase your utility bills. This is why our former council member, no, it won't. Because you have the choice to choose your rate tier, to choose your power provider. There were comments about the budget at CPA and the credit rating at CPA. The financial strength of CPA has been laid out clearly in many meetings over many years. There was a commenter, city council candidate, another one who commented, who said, CCAs are flawed business models, the Marine Choice Energy is a fraud, and that our city would have been out millions of dollars if we had joined Lancaster. No. No. 24 CCAs operating in the state. All of them successfully, one exception, a small one that was poorly managed. Marine Choice Energy is operating very well, serving its customers very well with a better credit rating, as Ted said, than Pacific Gas and Electric, which is its competitor in that market. Lancaster is operating successfully. We wouldn't have been out millions of dollars. So these are examples of just plain misinformation. People who either don't know what they're talking about or are intentionally trying to mislead people in trying to understand a complex topic. So let me go off some of the questions specifically to this item. Is Edison working along parallel lines? I assume that means in terms of their power mix, in terms of how much renewable energy they're going to provide. Yeah, under state law, they're required in their renewable portfolio standard to have increasing levels of renewable energy. But CPA is beating them already and is going to get there faster. And when it comes to reducing our carbon emissions, time matters. Additional cost to residents, we've talked about that. No, not unless you choose a higher rate tier or you don't opt out of a higher rate tier. There were a lot of comments about, gee, why don't you just postpone the decision? Of course, those are the ones that were coupled with, gee, we've been talking about this for a really long time. Elections don't drive city management. We have to manage the city as best we see fit, as best we see fit. Everybody up here is duly elected. So we're going to manage the city for the betterment of all the residents. Are the positions on the CPA board paid? I don't know the answer to that. They are not. Okay, Ted is nodding his head no. All right. No difference between Edison rates was one of the comments. Not true. I just encourage everybody who's got the agenda in front of them to open up Attachment 11. That is the 2022, 2023 rates showing a difference. Clean Power Alliance's lowest renewable rate tier is cheaper than Edison's base rate. Its intermediate rate tier is at the same price point as Edison's. Its intermediate rate tier is at the same price point as Edison's base rate. And a hundred percent green power is on a typical residence bill, five bucks more a month or three percent more a month than Edison's base rate. There was a comment that if we all, and this was sort of beside the point, but just emblematic of the amount of misinformation that's out there, that if we meet our targets for electric vehicle penetration, we're going to have long lines at gas stations. You typically charge your electric vehicle at home. That's how it goes. So I recommend that the commenter talk to somebody who actually drives an electric vehicle. People driving electric vehicles unless they're traveling long distances, charge at home. People who drive gas-powered vehicles don't charge at home, all of them, a hundred percent of them use gas stations. One of the ironies of the comments is this was one that had me scratch my head. Competition will raise rates. Edison and Clean Power Alliance will work with each other and raise rates. I'm not even sure how to respond to that, except to say that that violates a fundamental principle of the free market and economics on which our entire capitalist system is built. How many counties in the Clean Power Alliance? There's thirty-two members, my understanding is that there's one county, it's LA County, is that right Ted? LA County and Ventura County, so two counties, and then the other thirty are cities? Okay. There was a comment about how joining the Clean Power Alliance would result in millions of dollars in unfunded projects in the city of Hermosa Beach. I don't even know what that comment is about because there's nothing about projects in Hermosa Beach or unfunded projects in Hermosa Beach related to the decision to go with the Clean Power Alliance. What there is, is increased incentives. And we should talk a little bit more about that because that was also one of the comments from our commissioner. One of the key ones that I'll just throw out there is the Clean Power Alliance is paying a ten percent premium versus Edison for solar power generated from our residents' rooftops. At the same time, by the way, that Edison and the other for-profit utilities are at the Public Utility Commission trying to kill the financial calculus for rooftop solar by imposing a flat tax or some kind of graduated tax on rooftop solar power generation so that the for-profit utilities can monopolize renewable energy generation and set prices. I want to thank Councilmember Horvath for being here. There was a, it was good to hear from him and his perspective on the CPA board and his availability to answer our questions. There was a comment about the oversight of the CPA board. A board overseeing a board? I mean, how many layers of oversight do we need? You have the California Energy Commission, you have the Public Utilities Commission, you have the board itself made up of elected officials answerable to their constituents. How much oversight do we want? There's no indication that we need more than there is built into the system. And lastly, there was a comment about how it wouldn't make sense unless the power plant was taken offline. That just totally ignores the fact that the more renewable energy capacity we build, the more renewable power plant, or more fossil fuel power plants we won't have to build in the future, in addition to potentially mothballing some of the ones that are already in service. So I'll just close by echoing one of the late comments, which was the whole purpose here was a basic fundamental free market capitalist principle, and that was to get competition in the marketplace, give people choice. This does that, you can stay with Edison, you can go to Clean Power Alliance, you can determine your rate tier. That kind of competition is going to drive down prices, it has in the markets where the CCAs are operating today. That's the key part of the choice. The ancillary benefits of being part of the solution to reducing our carbon emissions, which we have committed to under Plan Hermosa and the merits of that by themselves, all speak for themselves. I, I won't go on any farther, I do have a couple more comments, but I think I'll leave it at that, Your Honor. This is not even a close question to join Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach at a hundred percent as part of Clean Power Alliance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you Ted, thank you Doug.
Thank you. Quick question for you, I don't think, Justin, projects, can you talk about projects for CPA, what you guys find, things like that in the community?
Sure, so. So I'll talk about two levels of projects. So the first are the utility scale projects that are the large projects that are the sort of the foundation of the general day-to-day electricity that our customers need. We have signed over a thousand megawatts of renewable energy projects, that's new build. All but one of them are in California and the vast majority are in Southern California. So these are your large solar projects, we also have wind and geothermal here in state. Additionally, in that utility scale realm, we are now the third largest purchaser of battery energy storage because as we have more and more customers using intermittent resources, we also have a responsibility to be able to provide that power when the sun doesn't shine or the wind doesn't blow or the geothermal plant is online, offline, so we have brought on about four hundred megawatts of battery energy storage and have another couple hundred megawatts already under contract and continue to buy as much battery energy storage as we can get online, as fast as we can get online. So that's at the, the utility scale level. At the local level, we have two sort of real fundamental programs that we're running. The first is PowerShare, which is a program for low-income customers where we offer a twenty percent discount and a hundred percent renewable energy generated from local sources. So at our board meeting next Thursday, we'll be bringing five power purchase agreements for rooftop solar projects on warehouses. One in Hawthorne, three of them in Carson, so right around the corner. And those will be allocated specifically to low-income customers to provide them with twenty percent bill discounts. The other big program for local projects is a program called Power Ready, where we are installing at no cost a clean energy backup power system in a critical facility in each one of our member agencies. So this is a city hall, a public works facility, an emergency operations center, a library which doubles out as a cooling center. We know that the grid will be stressed for years to come and the impact of climate change will raise heat, raise temperatures, we're feeling that this month. We know that when temperatures rise, vulnerable folks need places to go and those places to go are only good places to go if there's reliable power. So we will be putting backup power systems powered by clean energy in those facilities at no cost to our cities. So the first twelve projects of those are scheduled to break ground next year. And as a member of CPA, you would have an opportunity to participate in that program.
And just to piggyback, what percentage of your energy procurement is in California or Southern California, if you have those numbers?
Oh, of our long-term renewable energy projects, we buy some in the short-term market and that comes from a power mix, but we have one wind project in Arizona out by the Hoover Dam. We have one geothermal project that is not yet built but under contract in Utah. Everything else is in Southern Calif, everything else is in California. And we have a geothermal project up Calistoga, you may have heard of Geysers. We buy from that geothermal plant. Everything else is in Kern County, Los Angeles County, San Bernardino, Riverside.
Councilwoman Armatto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my colleague, Councilmember Massey, addressed the topic very well, addressed the questions, a lot of which was misinformation. You know, a little heartbroken that some of my friends are thinking my vote shouldn't count despite being elected and serving in this role for over six years. But I'll brush it off, JR, don't worry, not for you, George. Okay, all right. Just to hit on the high, high notes. Look, we can opt out before we transition or after, at any time. You can go to Southern California Edison, you can stay with CPA. You can change your rate level at any time during the contract. We have a seat at the board, our community on the board, our community will be represented. Right now, we're not represented at all with the decisions that Southern California Edison is making. In fact, they are challenging to deal with. Other cities are clearly satisfied with, I think it was ninety-five participation. Ninety-five percent, I mean, that's, that's a high level of participation. Particularly when residents are given the opportunity to opt out. You know, Robert Fortunato said it, others did as well, competition is good. I don't question that at all. And this helps us meet our carbon emission reduction goals. So, you know, I, I support moving forward and I look forward to my other colleagues' comments, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor Pretten, Councilwoman Campbell. There's delay, Councilwoman Campbell, ladies first.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm scratching my head as well because I am really shocked that this is controversial at this point at all, I really, really am. I'll say it for the, maybe the twenty-fifth time tonight. Not only can you opt out, anytime you like, you can opt out before you might have been opted in. And we have, we would have something of, of a healthy year with this, and I to thoroughly educate our community because one thing that is very evident and generally when these either historically controversial topics come back and it's been a long tail, but people check in at different times. Not only over the course of eight years or whatever it's been, but over the course of one evening and one meeting. And so it is, it is a significant chore to keep everyone informed and up-to-date at the same time. But that is our job and we will do it, that's, that said. I, I didn't, I heard everything tonight and I thought I had maybe not heard one point. And then I think I just heard Council Armatto bring it up, or at least in a tangential way, help us meet our carbon goals. This is part of our long-range master plan, which was a plan built very carefully and painstakingly by this community and the majority of residents who contributed to what ends up in those sections of our long-range master plan that have to do with reducing carbon emission footprint, helping to lead. It's impossible to pay any level of attention to news, including of the last couple of days and especially the last hours, that the climate crisis is accelerating. You don't even have to believe one expert over another, you can observe it with your own eyes, feel it with your own skin. And we need to be part of the solution. We have we have communicated time and time again through many years of leadership in this community that we want to be one of the leaders toward, as, as one of the caller said, create a bridge. We are behind at this point. Ironic since we were once at the front end of this. It's overdue. It, it cannot wait, in my opinion. It's consistent with our long-range plans as well as the, as global and federal, you know, imperatives. People have said we have to live with it, you don't have to live with anything. You can make the choice. I do not understand why people continue even tonight as thoroughly as we went through this again, that people still think they will not have choice to control how much pain in a, in a competitive market. We certainly know that there's a huge demand for people wanting options to contribute to being part of the solution. Everybody needs to be part of the solution. And that's really all I can add, I, as far as the risk concerns that were raised, I'm pretty convinced at this stage especially, they're quite low. And I intend to support moving forward. I see no reason to kick the can down the road. It takes years to approach this. A new council wouldn't change the master plan or the requirements of the state. One of the biggest complaints about government is that, is that it takes so long to work through the painstaking steps to consider something complex, yet important. And we're finally here and I believe that we move forward. And I see absolutely no reason to wait. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Campbell, Mayor Pretten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again Ted and our city staff for their work on this issue. I was at that first offsite that we had when we discussed this for several hours. And I've come to learn quite a bit about CCA and clean energy and, you know, things I quite frankly never thought I'd be that involved in. You know, the fact is, we've been talking about this for years. I have never been, nor will I ever be a fan of kicking anything down the road, and if you can make a decision today, as we learned growing up, never put off tomorrow what you can do today. And, you know, it's, it's clear in my mind that this is something we should do today, quite frankly, we should have done it years ago. I think there was a benefit to waiting because we got to learn the good and the bad. And I think the good clearly outweighs any potential negatives and, and I had two concerns initially as I was reviewing this, thinking about tonight's meeting. The first one was the, the opt-in. I mean, we have all been prey to the, you click on something and then the next month you see some membership fee and you go, I thought it was a bloody one-time thing. Now I gotta call or I gotta send an email and I gotta opt, you know, I didn't know I was joining this, whatever I ended up clicking and joining. And that was a concern. But those concerns were relayed when Ted got up and told us about the four opportunities you have, two before, two after, and then anytime after. So I'm not concerned about that opting in mechanism because I think as Mr. Bark's alluded to, you know, he's, Redondo Beach has been a member since twenty nineteen. He himself said that his rates haven't gone up and they're moving from the fifty percent to a hundred percent renewable, so I, I think that's obviously a testament to all the good things that are going on right now with the CPA. You know, Plan Hermosa, I think Mary mentioned this. It identified the importance of CCAs and renewable energy in helping us achieve our emissions reduction goals. And it's clear that CCAs is one of the most impactful options that we have as a city in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. So I am going to support this recommendation. Um, that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've seen the explanation one more time because I'm not that very smart. I'm not that smart. Question asked earlier, member agency withdrawals, the city withdrawals from the JPA, what would liability be for the city? Because there is a general fund liability there.
We would sell the power that we had acquired on behalf of the customers in Hermosa Beach. And the city would be liable for the difference between the, the cost that we acquired that power for and what we were, um, able to sell it for at that future moment in, in time. That's why I can't calculate it. Um, but again, that's if the city were to withdraw from the JPA. Um, it's not about what an individual customer does or, um, even what the city were to do with its own accounts. That's if you had a wholesale um, withdrawal from, because then we would no longer be able to serve the customers in, in Hermosa Beach.
If a future council ever wants to remove themselves, do it during a, a heat wave.
Uh, um, there's also like, uh, um, so I will say just, um, uh, I don't mean to be sort of light about it. Two hundred and four, um, municipalities and counties in California have joined a JPA. Except for the one Western thing, everybody who's been part of a JPA, not a single city has withdrawn. So that's what's written in the JPA because we have to have a provision that allow you to leave the JPA. Um, and most, uh, CCAs have some type of provision like that. It's never been exercised.
Okay. Um, I am one of the grandfathered ones of the hundred percent Edison Renewable, which, you know, up until the staff report came out, I was kind of amazed that they've taken that off the market, um, for the time being. Uh, my mom is a Redondo resident who is part of CPA. Um, and so, you know, she's only been there for two years now, but, um, I, you know, there's always that concern. I think the JPA side of it, so there's no, the only liability the city would have is if they would fully withdraw from the JPA, but if it ever comes to a point in time where one city is, I assume the whole JPA would probably dissolve in, you know, twenty fifty or whatever timeframe that looks, but, um, I will be in agreement with my council members, my colleagues tonight. Um, this was a very tough decision and I appreciate Doug's explanation, um, prior to the meeting and, and tonight and, uh, Ted for your time. Um, the, the choices is there and if people want to opt out, they can. Um, but I, I do think that providing more choice and especially an option that, you know, if, if I were to move to this town currently and want to enroll in a hundred percent Edison Renewable, it's not even an option right now. Um, so having that ability through CPA, um, is a, is a positive in my mind. So, um, Councilor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we waive full reading and introduce by title in ord- by title only, an ordinance of the City of Hermosa Beach approving the joint powers agreement for Clean Power Alliance of Southern California and authorize the implementation of a community choice aggregation program. We authorize the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest to a joint powers agreement subject to approval by the city attorney and direct staff that the default energy rate should be a hundred percent for enrollment of customers.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilor Massey, a second from Councilwoman Armando. Any comments on the motion? Councilwoman Campbell.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Mayor. One quick, uh, final clarification about the hundred percent. Um, my understanding, I want to make sure, uh, others are clear who have been listening tonight, that opting for the hundred percent means if you are enrolled, which of course you can opt out, you will be enrolled at the hundred percent tier. Um, but not stuck with it ever. You can still move around or, or quit and go back to SE. Have, have I got that completely straight? Anybody?
I'm seeing thumbs in the air.
Well, all right. Just want to make sure.
Let's just clarify one thing. My understanding is that before service begins, if you want to opt down, you can. So you don't necessarily, if you, you have the choice to opt out to stay with Edison or you have the choice to opt down to start at forty percent or fifty percent. If you do nothing, you begin service at a hundred percent.
What the default, um, means in, in, in very simple terms is if you don't do anything, that's what happens. If you, but you, doesn't take away any choice to do, uh, either opting out or opting to a different rate. It's just for the folks who do nothing. We have to have a choice or we have to have an option for folks who do nothing. Um, and that's what it is.
Great. I just wanted to make sure no one misinterpreted with, with that part of the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to add one comment if it's okay, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's a, there, it's been a lot of talk tonight about why now, why now, and we should wait and, you know, we should sit on our hands and not do our jobs. Um, you know, I just want to remind the community that it was in September that we got the letter from the CPA approving and inviting us to become a member. So this is, this isn't something that we're jamming through at the, trying to jam through at the eleventh hour on the eve of an election as some sort of broad conspiracy. This is a response to an invitation that we received from the CPA. And I just want to make sure that was clear for everybody out there.
All right. Any other deliberation on the motion?
I'll just make one more comment, Mr. Mayor, and thank, uh, Redondo Beach Councilmember Christian Horvath for, uh, his uh, being with us remotely tonight, his comment, and of course, um, his support and motion on the board to add, um, or to allow Hermosa Beach to join the CPA. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. This public hearing is now closed. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Armando.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor DeToye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm going to take liberty to recess this meeting till ten o'clock for a little break. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started back up. All right, Madam City Clerk. Do we need a roll call coming back from recess?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Seeing everybody back, I'll, I'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Armando. I'm doing a quick roll call.
Oh, here.
Uh, Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Massey.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jackson.
Here.
And Mayor DeToye.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm based at thirteen C.
Okay, item thirteen C, introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hermosa Beach, California, amending chapter seventeen point four zero, conditional use permit and other permit standards to add section seventeen point four zero point two three zero, time shares uses to title seventeen zoning and amending section seventeen point two six point zero three zero to permit time share uses in specified commercial zones pursuant to a conditional use permit and determining that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. I welcome Director Nodden for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. I'd like to ask our Madam City Clerk to please pull up the slide deck. The presentation.
It's coming right up.
Great. Thank you very much. The item for your consideration tonight is a proposed draft ordinance that would add section seventeen point forty point two three zero for time share uses and amend chapter seventeen point forty for CUP standards of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code. Next slide, please. Fractional ownership or uses identical to time share is an emerging trend in real estate where ownership of properties is equally shared among multiple owners, typically between four and twelve owners. The amount of time the owner may spend at the property correlates to the fraction of ownership. The time allotment is not typically used consecutively, but rather one or two weeks at a time. In addition to the cost to purchase their share of the home, the owners are responsible for their share of maintenance, property management fees, HOA fees, cleaning costs, utilities, taxes, insurance, and payment into a reserve fund to cover long-term repairs such as a replacement of a roof. Next slide, please. Time share use as defined in the draft ordinance consists of the use of one or more combinations. Or any part thereof as a time share property pursuant to a time share plan. Accommodations include any unit or structure that is constructed for residential use and occupancy. And a time share plan is an arrangement facilitated or organized by a third party non purchaser. The purchaser or fractional owner in exchange for consideration. Receives the right to exclusive use of an accommodation for a period of less than a year during any given year on a recurring basis. Next slide, please. This ordinance does not apply to a home or other residential property owned by multiple family members or multiple people. The key in fractional ownership or time share use is that that a third party facilitates a purchase of the property. And provides the necessary maintenance, furnishings, property management, and cleaning services in exchange for monthly fees. And this model is different than a business that may allow one purchaser to buy time in any one particular unit. But that business then rents out that unit as a hotel room. For the rest of the year. Additionally, in that scenario, multiple multiple purchasers are not eligible to buy time in that particular unit. Next slide, please. As drafted, the proposed ordinance would permit time share uses in the C one zone subject to a conditional use permit. There are a total of thirty six properties in the C one zoning district, twenty of which currently contain residential uses. The ordinance would prohibit a third party company from offering these types of time share plans in other zoning designations. And it's important to note that this ordinance does not prohibit corporate or fractional ownership of property in the city. Next slide, please. For the council and communities benefit, the following slides illustrate the location of properties that are zone C one. This first slide in light pink are the properties at the southwest end of the city. On Hermosa Avenue between Herando and Second Street. Next slide, please. It's a bit of cold to distinguish this coloring, but there are four properties that are zone C one on the left side of this exhibit. Located on the strand between Tenth and Eleventh Streets. Next slide, please.